I like your hair better this way. I'm gonna dye mine this weekend. You guys will see me.
You can save it for me.
You're gonna save it for me?
Yeah, my daughter's gonna do it.
I just wanna say hello. I gotta go, what's up?
My wife, my wife would have next to me.
When you had the baby.
Alright, don't get shy. I guess we're gonna get started right now.
You know, if I start talking to...
Thank you.
It's pretty big, gosh.
Steve Test-- oh, here we come. Thank you so much, Jennifer. We'll be starting the city council meeting in a few minutes. If everybody can just find a seat and help us to get prepared. We'll be starting in a minute. All right, now that all the council members are present, I call to order the April 19th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council met in closed session this evening, and no action was taken on the one item to address potential litigation. And we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Mr. Pete Palmedesey Sr. If you can please go to the podium, everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
As noted on our agenda, city council is prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1. And we will bring up Item 1 later, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. This public-- the public is given an opportunity at this time to address city council issues on items not listed on the agenda. And we do ask that anyone wishing to address council on this or any other item this evening, to please fill out a request to speak card and return it to the clerk. It is on that corner there against the wall. Once the staff report has been read and we open up the item for public comment, we will not accept further speaking requests. Our clerk will announce the name of the individuals requesting to speak. Now in front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to the specified number of minutes. And also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety. So we request that there be no applause, or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address this city council abide by the code of conduct posted and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, or abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Sorry. So, we are going to begin with Item 2, consideration of a proclamation of the West Sacramento City Council recognizing the Palmedesey family for their dedicated service to the city. Sacramento. Whereas George and Luisa Palmedesey were early pioneers to West Sacramento with their purchase of the Tiger Inn and 10 acres of farmland in 1935. George farmed while Luisa began to serve lunches and sandwiches to local farmers under the name of Hideaway Inn. And whereas George Palmedesey established roots in the city and continued to farm while daughters Angie, Dina, and Rita helped Luisa in the restaurant, and son Peter followed his father's footsteps in farming. And whereas in 1945, family members were joined by Angie's husband, John Rivera, and Dina's husband, Fran Andrade. And in 1946, at the suggestion of John Rivera, the restaurant was renamed Club Pheasant. The famous garlic steak sandwich was created, and the restaurant became the city's first full-service restaurant. And whereas the Palmedesey family's dedication enabled Club Pheasant to become an iconic and beloved community gathering place for family celebrations, birthday parties, and business meetings. And whereas the Palmedesey family continued to expand the restaurant and outdoor patio to accommodate larger groups and outdoor music events, contributing to the sense of place and community character. And whereas for 87 years, Club Pheasant employed five generations of descendants, George and Luisa, many residents, and provided hundreds of local teenagers with their first working experience. These employees helped serve over 3 million garlic steak sandwiches and over 30 million ravioli. And now therefore be it hereby proclaimed by the City of West Sacramento that the Palmedesey family be recognized for their significant and long-lasting contributions to the community and quality of life of the citizens of West Sacramento, proclaimed on this 19th day of April 2023. Congratulations and thank you so much. And I would like to invite the city council to come down.
They're gonna take a photo, so families should...
Yeah, do we wanna do our normal spot?
Oh, definitely.
Alright, sounds good.
Okay.
I'll hold on to this and then open it up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give council an opportunity to share a few remarks about their thoughts about the Palmedesey family and Club Pheasant, because it is definitely ingrained in all of our lives, one way or another, in such a positive way. So we just will start off with Councilmember Sopizio Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I was kicking off my campaign for council, one of the first calls I made was to Patty Palmedesey, asking if I could have my kickoff event at the Pheasant Club. We couldn't make it work, but that's what the Pheasant Club is, a place for important events. It's for birthday parties and 21st birthday parties and, you know, 60-year birthdays. And everybody in West SAC has a story to tell about the Pheasant Club. I could ask everybody, raise your hand, if you have a great story about the Pheasant Club here. And I think everybody would raise their hand if they had a great story about the Pheasant Club. That space was created from blood, sweat, tears, and love from the Palmedesey family. You can't talk about the history of West Sacramento without talking about the Pheasant Club, and we can't talk about the Pheasant Club without mentioning and, you know, elevating the Palmedesey family. The love and commitment you gave to the community to create a space for everyone is just incredible. And for a business, a restaurant business, not an easy industry to be in, to do it for almost 90 years is incredible. You created space for important meetings. You offered nonprofits a space for affordable meals. And you created a cozy place for people to go after a long day to sit at the bar and get a drink and talk to bartenders who have spent most of their career working there. The service you've given to West Sacramento through your restaurant is just incredible. You know, being from West Sacramento, you could just say the Pheasant Club and anybody in the region would know what you were talking about. And still to this day, that stays the same. I do hope this is not the last time we acknowledge your family this year. Additionally, with the redevelopment of the Pheasant Club, I hope we continue your legacy by creating a space for the community to build and thrive. So thank you for all of the years that you gave to the community to create space and to do it with really good food. And 30 million raviolis is quite a number. I did some math, and that's over 500 miles of ravioli. And I think I'm part-- like, I'm probably 10 miles of those raviolis, because it was absolutely my favorite thing in the world. So thank you so much for everything you've given to us.
Councilmember Brokaw?
Thank you. I want to thank you so much for making the Pheasant Club a part of so many family traditions. I think my first experience with the Pheasant Club is when I went as an invited guest of my mom's Holy Cross Altars Society. That was the standard. Every Christmas, they would go there. And occasionally, some of the members would also go for their birthdays. I remember going out there, and it seemed like such a long way out when I first started going, back in the 60s and early 70s. It was-- there were just very few houses out there. And then, of course, everything grew up around it. But that was the constant that was there. And I always looked forward. I liked the steak sandwiches. Those were my favorites. And my husband cried when he found out you guys were closing, because I can't think of any other place. I mean, there's some good places, but there's nothing like your steak sandwiches. There never will be. You know, your staff was always fantastic. It was like coming home again. So, thank you so much, and I'll let the other council members speak.
Mayor Portemar Roscoe?
Oh, Councilmember Dante Early.
So, I remember moving to West Sacramento, gosh, almost 20 years ago, 17 years, give or take. And that was the place that you would go, where you could get an affordable meal, be able to have your kids come with you and play outside. And it really did truly feel like family. Fast forward, I am now part of West Sacramento Rotary. And we have so many memories of coming together around community service and helping and supporting the entirety of West Sacramento. And to Councilmember Akla's point, the team was always so welcoming. And the service was always just so amazing, and the food, really delicious. I'm going to miss having that. It is a staple and, what I would say, a gem of our Southport area here in West Sacramento. I am excited and honored, quite frankly, that we will be able to create a community space that will hopefully honor the memory that you have built here. So thank you so much.
Mayor Portemar Roscoe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to first thank Councilmember Sopizio Hall for pushing this forward. This recognition is really well overdue, and I'm excited for all of the folks who came in support of recognizing one of the most monumental families in our mighty little city. I, along with Councilmember Sopizio Hall and Dr-- or Councilmember Early, would spend our Fridays there with the mighty West Sacramento Rotary Club. And it is a missed fixture in our experience. I want to share a story from my mentor at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, someone who gave nearly 30 years of her career in the Sex Assault and Child Abuse Unit, someone who taught me how to become a litigator and a prosecuting attorney in that area. And I bring this up because she would go at lunch to the Club Pheasant and pick up lunch to go when her parents became too ill to go on their own. And today, I talked to her, and I took some notes, and I want to share this message with you. She said, "In the mid-60s, my dad, Bill, worked for Shell, and his office was off Jefferson on the River Road. He and his coworkers loved to go to lunch at Club Pheasant, driving down the country road of Jefferson Boulevard with only fields surrounding the restaurant. My dad spoke very fondly of lyer's dice at the bar and the great food. He would remember how dark inside it was and how bright and hot it was when they came outside after lunch." We also went to Club Pheasant as a family, starting at the time-- at that time, and I loved the friendliness and great food. We celebrated many family events there at the Club Pheasant. We moved away from the area in the early 70s, but after 44 years for working for Shell, my dad retired, and he and my mom Carol moved back to Sacramento. Even during the years living away, they would always make time for lunch or dinner when they were in town visiting relatives. Bill and Carol Cochrane loved going to lunch at Club Pheasant. Their all-time favorite was a steak sandwich, and his pro tip was, "Order medium rare, and it will be straight off the grill." Their all-time favorite Palmedesey was Patty. Mom and dad loved seeing Patty and chatting with her whenever they stopped in. They always asked for a table in the bunny room and always had a martini before their steak sandwich. My dad, Bill, passed away sadly in March of 2022 at the age of 93 and a half. My mom is 93, and they were married for over 70 years. As a side note, I'll let you know that my friend, my mentor Nancy Cochrane, did go to Club Pheasant to pick up some meals right before his passing as a tribute to his favorite lunch. During the last part of their lives together, it was too difficult to go to Club Pheasant, so we would order steak sandwiches and take delicious dinner to them. My mom would always order a box or two of raves and a quart of gravy to have on the other nights at home. Our family has so many wonderful memories of Club Pheasant. We've beloved being patrons all over all those years. Steak, sandwich, and raves, all the best. Please say hi to Patty. I'm sure she'd remember us. You are far more than just a historical landmark. If anything, you're the heart of West Sacramento and a gem that will never be forgotten. And it is such a delight to know that Club Pheasant will stay in perpetuity. I know I could speak for my colleagues on this council when I say that you have not only meant so much to our lives, but for generations well before us. Congratulations, and thank you all for being here tonight to celebrate this momentous event.
Thank you, Mayor Portemar Roscoe. And yes, I speak also, complimenting and echoing what my fellow council members have expressed. Deep gratitude, appreciation. There is no way we can compensate and return what you have contributed to this entire community, providing support for those in need, building up West SAC Little League and other sports activities, making history here for West Sacramento, making it a place where many now call home. I do want to say, bringing back, channeling Councilmember Chris Ledesma. He too, originally, when we were first looking at Club Pheasant, he too wanted to make sure you were recognized. And I think all of us at the time appreciated that comment and were looking for opportunities. And I'm so grateful that we are all here, wanting to recognize-- we all pushed for this-- as a united city council, equally, making sure that you were recognized here today in the chamber. Making sure that we expressed what your contributions have been to the heart and to the families. What you've accomplished was establishing and setting family values, business values, working hard, making sure that everyone works collaboratively as a family. That is what I see in the Palmedesey and the entire network of support that you receive from your entire family. And continuing to build that is what we're doing today. And I hope that we can make you proud of the future of West Sacramento, because you established the seed. You established the future of West Sacramento. So I just want to again, once again, applaud and thank you so much for what you've done for our beautiful city. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the city council and the city of West Sacramento for supporting us for all these years. We've did a lot of work. We've worked hard. Being a restaurant owner is like a love of work. You have to love it to make it run. But you also have to have a personality, to greet people, to know people, consistency. Your steak sandwich that you had 30 years ago is the same today as it was 30 years ago. And that is the highest thing that you can do in owning a restaurant, is having consistency and knowing the people. When they walk through the door, "Hello, Bill. How are you? How's your wife, Joan?" That is all something that people enjoy. They eat that up. But that's what brings them back. And that's what this whole family has done. They've made people feel comfortable. When you walk through the door, you're acknowledged. They sit you down. The waitresses take care of you. They talk to the kids. That's all part of being in a restaurant business. But it doesn't necessarily be in a restaurant business. Every business that you have today, when somebody walks through the door, if somebody doesn't say, acknowledge you and say, "What can I do for you? Can I help you?" Mr. Jones, sit down.
There were just very few houses out there, and then, of course, everything grew up around it. But that was the constant that was there. And I always looked forward. I liked the steak sandwiches. Those were my favorites. And my husband cried when he found out you guys were closing, because I can't think of any other place. I mean, there's some good places, but there's nothing like your steak sandwiches. There never will be. You know, your staff was always fantastic. It was like coming home again. So, thank you so much, and I'll let the other council members speak.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Oh, council member Dante Early.
So, I remember moving to West Sacramento, gosh, almost 20 years ago, 17 years, give or take. And that was the place that you would go, where you could get an affordable meal, be able to have your kids come with you, and play outside. And it really did truly feel like family. Fast forward, I am now part of West Sacramento Rotary, and we have so many memories of coming together around community service, and helping and supporting the entirety of West Sacramento. And to council member Alcala's point, the team was always so welcoming, and the service was always just so amazing, and the food, really delicious. I'm going to miss having that. It is a staple, and what I would say, a gem of our Southport area here in West Sacramento. I am excited and honored, quite frankly, that we will be able to create a community space that will hopefully honor the memory that you have built here. So, thank you so much.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to first thank Councilmember Sopizio Hall for pushing this forward. This recognition is really well overdue, and I'm excited for all of the folks who came in support of recognizing one of the most monumental families in our mighty little city. I, along with Councilmember Sopizio Hall and Doctor, or Councilmember Early, would spend our Fridays there for the Mighty West Sacramento Rotary Club, and it is a missed fixture in our experience. I want to share a story from my mentor at the Sacramento County District Attorney's Office, someone who gave nearly 30 years of her career in the Sex Assault and Child Abuse Unit, someone who taught me how to become a litigator and a prosecuting attorney in that area. And I bring this up because she would go at lunch to the Club Pheasant and pick up lunch to go when her parents became too ill to go on their own. And today, I talked to her, and I took some notes, and I want to share this message with you. She said, "In the mid-'60s, my dad, Bill, worked for Shell, and his office was off Jefferson on the River Road. He and his coworkers loved to go to lunch at Club Pheasant, driving down the country road of Jefferson Boulevard with only fields surrounding the restaurant. My dad spoke very fondly of lyers' dice at the bar and the great food. He would remember how dark inside it was, and how bright and hot it was when they came outside after lunch. We also went to Club Pheasant as a family, starting at the time, at that time, and I loved the friendliness and great food. We celebrated many family events there at the Club Pheasant. We moved away from the area in the early '70s, but after 44 years for working for Shell, my dad retired, and he and my mom Carol moved back to Sacramento. Even during the years living away, they would always make time for lunch or dinner when they were in town visiting relatives. Bill and Carol Cochran loved going to lunch at Club Pheasant. Their all-time favorite was a steak sandwich, and his pro tip was, "Order medium rare, and it will be straight off the grill." Their all-time favorite Pomadesi was Patty. Mom and dad loved seeing Patty and chatting with her whenever they stopped in. They always asked for a table in the bunny room, and always had a martini before their steak sandwich. My dad, Bill, passed away sadly in March of 2022 at the age of 93 and 1/2. My mom is 93, and they were married for over 70 years. As a side note, I'll let you know that my friend, my mentor Nancy Cochran, did go to Club Pheasant to pick up some meals right before his passing as a tribute to his favorite lunch. During the last part of their lives together, it was too difficult to go to Club Pheasant, so we would order steak sandwiches and take delicious dinner to them. My mom would always order a box or two of raves and a quart of gravy to have on the other nights at home. Our family has so many wonderful memories of Club Pheasant. We beloved being patrons all over all those years. Steak, sandwich, and raves, all the best. Please say hi to Patty. I'm sure she'd remember us." You are far more than just a historical landmark. If anything, you're the heart of West Sacramento, and a gem that will never be forgotten. And it is such a delight to know that Club Pheasant will stay in perpetuity. I know I could speak for my colleagues on this council, and I say that you have not only meant so much to our lives, but for generations well before us. Congratulations, and thank you all for being here tonight to celebrate this momentous event.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Orozco. And yes, I speak also, complimenting and echoing what my fellow council members have expressed. Deep gratitude, appreciation. There is no way we can compensate and return what you have contributed to this entire community, providing support for those in need, building up West Sac Little League and other sports activities, making history here for West Sacramento, making it a place where many now call home. I do want to say, bringing back, channeling councilmember Chris Ledesma, he too, originally, when we were first looking at Club Pheasant, he too wanted to make sure you were recognized. And I think all of us at the time appreciated that comment, and we're looking for opportunities. And I'm so grateful that we are all here, wanting to recognize, we all pushed for this, as a united city council, equally, making sure that you were recognized here today in the chamber, making sure that we expressed what your contributions have been to the heart and to the families. What you've accomplished was establishing and setting family values, business values, working hard, making sure that everyone works collaboratively as a family. That is what I see in the Pomadesi and the entire network of support that you receive from your entire family. And continuing to build that is what we're doing today. And I hope that we can make you proud of the future of West Sacramento, because you established the seed, you established the future of West Sacramento. So, I just want to, again, once again, applaud and thank you so much for what you've done for our beautiful city. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the city council and the city of West Sacramento for supporting us for all these years. We've did a lot of work. We've worked hard. Being a restaurant owner is like a love of work. You have to love it to make it run, but you also have to have a personality, to greet people, to know people, consistency. Your steak sandwich that you had 30 years ago is the same today as it was 30 years ago. And that is the highest thing that you can do in owning a restaurant, is having consistency and knowing the people when they walk through the door. Hello, Bill. How are you? How's your wife, Joan? That is all something that people enjoy. They eat that up, but that's what brings them back. And that's what this whole family has done. They've made people feel comfortable. When you walk through the door, you're acknowledged, they sit you down, the waitresses take care of you, they talk to the kids. That's all part of being in a restaurant business. But it doesn't necessarily be in a restaurant business. Every business that you have today, when somebody walks through the door, if somebody doesn't say, acknowledge you and say, "What can I do for you? Can I help you?" "Mr. Jones, sit down, and we'll talk this out," that opens a door for you. And that happens in every business that there is. It doesn't have to be a restaurant business. It can be any business. Personality and consistency. I thank you very much. The family appreciates this, and hopefully, the city will do something great with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The city manager has requested to bring up item eight at this time, to provide a quick update before the item is fully taken a later part of the agenda.
Right. Yeah, we're not actually taking the item up to look at some agenda, but it may be some time, I'm guessing, reading the room before we get there. So, I know there's been some confusion, some question about what that item means. But first of all, I just want to also reiterate everything the council said in celebrating not just the Pomadesi family, but the legacy of the Pheasant Club. I think when the property, when the council had the option to look at purchasing the property, I can speak as the person that they were giving direction to, that it was immediately clear to them, the legacy of the property, what your family created, was something that wasn't just unique to West Sacramento, but really to the region. And, you know, I think we all had seen the opportunity that we don't, we have a long history in West Sacramento, but we don't have a lot of places where we can preserve that type of legacy. And so, I think the council appreciated that. That's what really drove the decision to move ahead with the acquisition of the property. And all I really wanted to touch on on number eight is, I know it's confusing. There's a state regulation that requires the city to go through this surplus land act process, but there is no intention whatsoever to have the result of that be where the property gets demolished or redeveloped as housing. The intent of the city all along, and will continue to be, is to preserve the history of that property, to do it in a way that creates a really community-oriented, ideally food-focused reuse of it, and celebrates not just the legacy of your family, but also the many, many decades of the Pheasant Club, but also creates something that I think everyone can be proud of once it's all done. It's going to take some time, and if you want to stick around for number eight to hear the technical details of it, you're welcome. But I just want to provide that reassurance to anyone who's here tonight and concerned with that item. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. At this time, we will also now take another item out of order, and it will be item 18, only the port commission appointment. We have two commission appointments to fill, and we will bring up the port commission appointment before the public comment section to fill one vacancy. What we will do, just to inform my council members, and if you please ask any questions you may have, is I will read a little background about the port commission, and then I will ask for either a recommendation at that time, or we can have a discussion. But I will also, prior to that discussion, ask for the city manager to provide a little background about his recommendation as part of that discussion. It can happen before our discussion, or it can happen during the discussion. So, I just wanted to let you know.
Mayor, could I make a recommendation right now before this discussion goes on? Because I wanted to make a recommendation of Tim Campbell.
Tim Campbell.
Tim Campbell.
That recommendation is on the table for now.
Thank you.
All right, and I will reference the background. According to California Code, Harbors and Navigation Code, HNC 6830 dot 1, notwithstanding Section 6830, the Sacramento-Yolo Port Commission shall be composed of five members selected and appointed as follows. Four commissioners will be appointed by the city council of the city of West Sacramento, which commissioners may be members of the city council, and notwithstanding Section 6835, shall be residents of the city of West Sacramento. The appointments shall be made in the manner set by law for appointments by the city of West Sacramento. One commissioner shall be appointed by the Board of Supervisors of Yolo County, which commissioner may be a member of the Board of Supervisors, and notwithstanding Section 6835, shall be a resident of the city of West Sacramento. The appointment shall be made in the manner set by law for appointments by the county of Yolo. The term of the members appointed pursuant to subdivision A shall be four years from the date of appointment, and commission members shall serve at the pleasure of the appointing authority, and the appointing authority may replace a member prior to the end of the term in the manner set by law for appointments by the appointing authority. Since Section 6835 is referenced twice here, what's included in statute states a person shall not be appointed by a member of the board who is not at the time of his appointment a taxpayer within the district, and who has not recited within the district for at least one year. And that is referenced twice in the statute. So, what I understand is, we have three choices. And the city manager has recommended two choices, one which is not make an appointment, or appoint a council member for the reasons he has specified and in his communications with us, and the third, which is also included in statute, which is appointment of a resident. And I will begin by asking whether anybody would like to start a discussion, or if we would like to go to ask the city manager what his recommendation, to speak a little more about his recommendations. What would you like to do?
I think it would be helpful, only because I don't think the communications and the recommendations that have been made to us are public, I don't think.
I think the city manager's fine.
Okay, but that's actually what I'm saying. So, could you ask the question, which would you like, and you looked at us? And so, I think it would be helpful to hear from our city manager.
Oh, I see, helpful. And then, after we have the discussion and the recommendation, we will not take a vote. We will open it up for public comment. I just want to make sure you are all aware of that. And then, once we close the public comment, we'll bring it back to discussion for council once again, and then we'll take a vote on the recommendations as they are presented. So, Mr. City Manager? Yes, go ahead, please.
I'm going to actually use the podium for this one.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I missed it up here. I don't usually do many presentations, but I feel on this one, I really want to talk to the council. So, I want to just kind of clarify first what my recommendation as the port CEO, and someone who's been staffed at the port since 2012, roughly, is not to leave the position vacant. It's actually to appoint a council member. So, staff's recommendation is to appoint a city council, or in this case, it would be either Councilmember Alcala or Vice Mayor Orozco to fill the vacancy on the port commission. Just to give a little background for the council, and also for the public, for the basis of that recommendation, which really just comes down to the basic principle of local control. It points back to the history of the port commission and the record for why the city both accepted and also pursued the great responsibility of managing the port back in 2006. I previously provided you some information and background, as was referenced, about how the port commission makeup was established at that time. The mayor went through the process of who can serve on the commission, and the record is important. So, there was a change in state law in 2006. I'll just summarize. The port was, though, a very different place in 2006 than it is today. It was in a very different place. Financially, it was suffering from major operating deficits of over $1 million a year. It was pursuing projects that didn't pan out to be feasible, such as channel deepening and rail expansion. It was considering more industrial development on the port's land holdings in Southport. Many of these things were potentially in conflict with the greater interests of the West Sacramento community, including traffic management, environmental sustainability, to name a couple. Yet, at that time, the city of West Sacramento held only two seats on the port commission, and there were actually seven seats at that time on the port commission. In fact, that was the case for 40 years, the previous 40 years prior to the governance change in 2006. Just to clarify that, Sacramento County had two seats, the city of Sacramento held two seats, and Yolo County had one. And again, West Sacramento only had two of the seven. So, when the governance change occurred, in the face of these great financial challenges with consideration of the long-term future of the port, again, the main driver for that change was local control. The whole point was to give the city of West Sacramento and its elected leadership on the city council full control of the port's destiny, and more so, the governance change acknowledged the importance of the city having that control, because it is the host community of the port, and it has such a profound impact on the city, both in the present and in the future. In fact, when the governance transition happened in 2006, all the parties that were subject to the port at that time, including the cities of West Sacramento and Sacramento, counties of Sacramento and Yolo, entered into what was called the Joint Port Governance Agreement. It was in that agreement that it actually stipulated that the seats formerly held by the Sacramento County and city representatives would be transitioned to West Sacramento city council members, not just representatives of West Sacramento, but council members. After that, there was the change in the law, as the mayor mentioned, clarified that those seats can be held by council members, and that's an important distinction, as the city and port attorney could weigh in on it, addressed any issue of incompatible office, saying that city council members can be both port commissioners and city council members. But it did also acknowledge that it could be also a resident of West Sacramento, or in Yolo County's case, a resident of Yolo County, or of the port district. So, it said that because it was important then, just as it is equally important now, that the port's leadership had the perspective and understanding of doing what's in the best interest of the city of West Sacramento. I was already working for the city in 2006 when the governance change happened. I didn't become involved in the port until 2012, but we were at another critical point in the port's history at that time. The port in 2012 was functionally bankrupt. The commission at that time, which included four city council members and then county supervisor Mike McGowan, had some very tough decisions to make to chart a new course for the port. We changed at that point to our current real estate-based model. Our operating model was very different after that point. With those changes, we turned around what was a negative $1.5 million operating deficit into annual profits, which the port has continued for the past 10 years. We were also able to take on a new real estate focus, and in the process, we were able to make some key acquisitions, like the Shell tank farm, like StoneLock, and also advance other economic development projects that would benefit the city, like development at Seaway, that would return dividends to the city in the form of new jobs and new tax revenue. But to make those tough decisions at that time in 2012, that principle of local control had to be at the forefront. What was in the best interest for the city had to be the top priority, and why? Well, for starters, at that time, that $1.5 million deficit that had to be plugged every year was being put up by the city, not any other entity except the city. We did that at that time, because otherwise, the port would be facing issues like liquidating all its real estate assets, which would not be in the best interest of the city, or worse, having to close. We made it through that tough period, and we're still balancing port operations against the priorities of the city, and for the most part, it's been working well under leadership of the port commission. Looking ahead, the principle of local control couldn't be more important, as both the port and the city need to balance some really fundamental issues in the city going forward, like flood control, like traffic management, rail conflicts, recreation, and the list goes on and on, economic development, many others where the interests of the city often intersect, but potentially could come into conflict with each other. In order to keep that big-picture perspective about the port and its relationship with the city, and in order to objectively reconcile those potential, both opportunities and conflicts, and to keep local control at the forefront, it's staff's recommendation that the council appoint council members as the city's four representatives on port commission, for the same reason it was done in 2006, again, for the same reason it was so important in 2012. So, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to articulate that recommendation. I'm happy to do it. I'll stay up here for a minute and answer any questions you might have, and then I'll go sit down for public comment. So, thank you.
Any questions among the council members at this time? Okay. I do have some questions, Mr. City Manager, and thank you so much for providing that very comprehensive background on the history of the port and where we are today. I do recall October 2021, when, in my role as mayor, I was interested in changing the composition of the port, to take a look at now as mayor, to appoint members that I would like to see appointed, and to have that dialogue with the council members. But I don't think any of you were aware. And I think that would have been a great opportunity for you to share a comparable memo that, or communication that what we received today. Is there a reason why, back then, I did not get that kind of recommendation?
I'm sorry, a recommendation to relook at the composition of the port commission?
At the time, there were two port commissioners who were now, at that time, when I became mayor, non-city council members.
Right.
And I had wanted to change the composition and express my interest to do so. It didn't come before council.
So, that appointment process, it resides with the local authority. In this case, the code does say that. So, the mayor does have the ability to make nominations for port appointments. And just to clarify that, the two members you're referring to, you're right, at the time, in 2021, when that came around, they were no longer city council members. However, they were city council members prior to that. They were appointed as city council members at that time, and in that case, it was in 2018, and they had terms left on their appointments. That is an ambiguity. It's not really an ambiguity. It's kind of an awkward part of the law. I acknowledge that, that you could have a situation where you have, in that case, it happened with two of them, one that decided not to run, one that was defeated, but their term, under the port code, still continued as former city council members. That's something I would actually encourage us to look at, to fix going forward. We would require a change in state law, but it is something that is, at best, it's awkward. In terms of why the, you know, the relook at the council, I'm sorry, the port commission composition didn't happen at the council level, I can't speak to, I think I can, we can all understand that it was a different city council at that time. But it's the city council's prerogative, ultimately. We provide recommendations. The city council can make the choice to say, as mayor, you can say, "I would like to nominate someone different to serve on the port commission. I'd like to remove an individual port commissioner." Ultimately, that's a decision of the city council. What we're talking about tonight is not that issue. What we're talking about is our recommendation for who should be appointed in the first place. And so, it's not exactly the same situation. In that case, those members were appointed in 2018 as council members. My recommendation tonight is to do the same.
So, I hear what you're saying. For some reason, though, I am looking at those two port commissioners as non-city council members who did not have that oversight in connecting with, you know, I get that they probably had the best intentions to take care of the city, which I know, you know, that they've worked very hard for their, most of their lives to do so. It was still, I wanted to use the prerogative, at the pleasure of the council, to make an appointment. And it was, we had, I think, two new council, or three new council members at the time, and I wanted to have the council members take, and we could have ended up with the same composition, but I did want the council members to take another look at the port commission, to make sure that we can arrive and, you know, an agreement. But we did not get that chance. We did not have that dialogue. I did not see a comparable explanation, like I'm hearing tonight, that they needed to be council members as a recommendation. In fact, it was, it was, we should...
If I can just say, it's the mayor's prerogative on that in terms of raising that issue, so...
Well, I just, there's a couple things, at least for me.
Yes.
I appreciate the memo. As someone who, I think, maybe I'm four months into the port commission?
I've lost track.
And so, I appreciate having, I can't speak to, right, why we didn't have it before. I appreciate having this memo now. It was, for me, very, very informative. I am still learning so much about the port commission. And also, I, hopefully, we are now in a better place, or in a place as a city council, where if there are things that you would like to bring up, you, obviously, you know, we've talked about it over and over again, we are united and supportive. And I know it is the pleasure of the mayor to do that. And so, I would also hope, just moving forward, if there are things that we would want changed, that we could work together, because it's not just our city manager that is making recommendations, it's also on us to have those discussions where needed, whether it's between you and I, or you and the Mayor Protem as well.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I just disagree with your recommendation, because it was not a recommendation I heard. This is the first time I've heard it. And if I had heard it back then, I would have thought, well, then we'll explore that in a council meeting. But I did not hear that.
If I could, there were not vacancies in the port commission at that time. It was a very different situation. You had members serving terms. There wasn't an open vacancy on the table. There was not a reason for me to provide a similar recommendation at that time. The mayor...
I have a question, Aaron.
Yes.
Since the mayor can appoint, even though the person's in the term, then couldn't the mayor take someone off at that point?
The mayor can make recommendations.
Make a recommendation.
This is exactly why I'm enjoying this education, because the mayor at any time could have made those recommendations, but then it is upon us to actually make the votes.
The council, in that case, would have had to...
Have control.
Right.
Would have had to vote to remove a current member.
So, real quick.
In that case, let's just acknowledge what the reality was at that point. That was not going to happen. That was not going to happen. There was no vacancy on the port commission at that time, and there was no basis for me or anyone else on staff to provide a recommendation about something that was a, wasn't even in front of us at that point. All the seats were filled. You had a different city council. It was still within your right to raise the option to remove a standing port commissioner. That's what the code clearly says, but that would have been done with you and the city council.
I have a quick question. When you mentioned local control, was that in reference to when we were part of Sacramento, and then you wanted control here in West Sac? So any resident of West Sac who was on the commission is considered part of local control? Is that correct?
What I mean by local control is, and it's not quite that. It's more about that when the port was first established, it was, the city wasn't even established yet. The port was, you know, first established in 1963. Much of the same reasoning for why West Sacramento Incorporated was about that principle. It was, we were being impacted by outside influences. We wanted to take control of a lot of our local issues, and in that case, incorporation resulted. There's a lot more factors, obviously, than that. But with the port, you know, in 2006, the port was facing some real challenges, and the way of solving those challenges didn't necessarily align with what was in the best interest of the city. And the city made that very clear. And the parties at the time, and maybe a lot of it had to do with financial circumstances, that there wasn't a lot of hope for what was the outlook there. The city stepped in and said, we want to take on this responsibility. We want to determine the destiny of this entity. The parties agreed, and it, as a result, they gave four of the five seats to the city of West Sacramento, city council. First, they were appointed as city council members. Then the code was updated to allow city council members to appoint any resident of West Sacramento. So to your point there, yes, you can be a West Sacramento resident. We have had one case where that happened, where they weren't a standing port commissioner, as I acknowledged in the information I gave you. But when I talk about local control, it's more about, you know, the impact and the importance of an entity like the port in the middle of our city, and wanting to have those in elected leadership positions be in the same, or similar positions, when dictating the future of that agency, in that case, the port district.
I do want to say I disagree in your interpretation of local control, in making a city council member an appointee. I think it's overreaching, and I just want to convey that to the public, that that's how I feel.
I'm not attempting to create a definition there. It's a principle. It's if you think, as city council members, that the issues that surround the port and intersect with the city are of utmost importance to the city of West Sacramento, that's what I mean, that the importance of local control over this entity should matter to the city as city council members. So therefore, it's our recommendation that, given that idea, it's best suited for city, I'm sorry, city council members to be our representatives on the port commission.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Okay.
Of course.
Real quickly, I just wanted to comment on that. We have so many commissions that are really critical. We have citizens appointed to those commissions. We all agreed on, you know, citizens being part of the process. I can't differentiate the port commission being composed completely of city council members. I think it's really important to have the public, their input, what they see as a vision for their city. And I also disagree that it should be all city council members.
So the difference on that is, you're speaking towards advisory commissions. In this case, you have a separate government entity under state law within our city that has 600 acres of property, operates a maritime cargo facility in the middle of our city, and has very important both opportunities and impacts on so many issues in the city. So it's really not, to compare it to an advisory commission, I would challenge that notion.
Okay, you can challenge that notion, and that's one of the reasons the recommendation I made is the person who has extensive experience, real-life experience, you know, as a longshoreman who knows our port. And, you know, to not have someone like that would be, it would be a loss for our city. It would be a real gain. The port is so critical to keep open. So many families, I know, I mean, just look at this room filled. There's so many families, their livelihood relies on that port and the correct decisions being made. You know, I feel like council members, no disrespect meant to any of us, but we don't have the insight that a person like Mr. Campbell has, the insights he could bring. So I think that would be, you know, a real loss for our city, a loss of revenue for our city, because I think he has a lot of connections out there that we haven't even begun to explore, which I plan on speaking more on after we have public comment made. So, thank you.
I'm laughing, because I can see my fellow council members, like, oh, I want to...
But you were next.
No, no, I was, but I feel it, so I'll try to make a quick...
Do you want to go?
So, again, I'm learning, and so this has, for me, been a really helpful process. Part of what I heard, not only you saying today, but also was detailed in your letter, is, or your recommendation, is that the port has not always been viable, and that, in fact, it was operating at a budget deficit, an operational deficit, not even just a budget deficit, not even just on paper, but...
Structural deficit.
A structural deficit. And it was West Sacramento, the city of West Sacramento, that was actually failing financially responsible for bailing out the port, basically. Now, I understand technically it wasn't our responsibility, but we chose to actually financially take responsibility, even though we didn't necessarily control at that time those seats. Am I understanding that correctly?
In the period of 2006, there were budget deficits. I don't want to make that assertion that the city was literally bailing out the port. When I reference that, it's more in the realm of around 2012, 2013, and the years leading up to that, after the governance change, the city was absolutely providing coverage for the port's budget deficits during that period.
If we were to go, if our port was going to go, again, God forbid, but if they went, if our port went into another deficit, would the city of West Sacramento be financially responsible for, again, meeting that structural or budget deficit?
The legal answer to that question would be no. However, practically speaking, the port is of such importance in terms of its future and its current, you know, current importance to the city, that if I'm in that seat, we are making recommendations to try to make the port solvent.
Potentially up to...
Just like we did 2012.
Potentially up to a couple million dollars. At that time, it was 1.3?
Yeah, and just to give more context to that era, there were solutions that were not great. So the port, like I mentioned, the port owns roughly 600 plus or minus acres in the city. I believe it's the biggest property owner. Those properties could have been liquidated. In fact, the port did quite a bit of property liquidation around that time. I would argue to the detriment of plans that could have been, you know, better utilized for those properties. So there were choices, and there would be choices there to liquidate property. However, that kind of speaks to the overall point I'm trying to make, is that the connections between the port and the city in terms of the future of those properties are so important that you wouldn't want the port as an independent entity going off liquidating property just to stay afloat, when that may not be in the best long-term interest of what happens at the city.
Does the city of Sacramento own more land than the port, or does the port?
Does the city of West Sacramento versus the port? The port owns far more land than the city of West Sacramento, in terms of developable acreage, not counting parks and other facilities, that sort of thing. I'm talking about property that can be utilized for development.
Thank you.
I appreciate your interest in the background of port transactions. Sorry, I do have a few more questions.
Oh, sure. I just want to make sure, I can sit down if you're done.
No, no, we're not done yet.
Good.
I do recall a recent transaction, I think probably the last port commission transaction. And it was a pretty significant one, where the transaction include, you know, the price of, you know, per foot, per square foot, and how the value of that price was much lower than, I think, the comparable analysis from what I've heard. But not only that, there was also, I listened to the port commission meeting, there was something that was undecided, and yet, the port commission moved forward and delegated that authority. So it seemed rushed when I listened to the port commission making that decision, to get that transaction, to get this deal negotiated. Now, in addition to that, there is, what is leading to my concern, is the public improvements up to $8 million for that port, that property now, that is now part of what is the port responsibility. And all of these transactions that were occurring, I was unaware of it as a mayor. And I know during that conversation, when I said I was interested in seeing us evaluate who would be future port commissioners, that I would be kept informed in some way of what's going on. Or I know Councilmember LaDesma would be our communicator on council, but none of those details were shared among all the council members. It came up in a news article, where then I read about it and had a lot of questions, looked into it. How, for me, how did, I have a hard time accepting that the port commissioners then acted in a way, and I don't think that they were malicious in any way, I just think it was the direction. And now, you're recommending that city council be the appointees. How at that time can that be such a separate transaction without city council being aware of it in some way?
That's a lot to unpack there. I think there were some assertions made there about the value of that potential, of that particular transaction. I want to be careful here, too, that, I mean...
It's public. Well, it's not the issue.
Right. Let me just address it this way.
It's not the issue, but it's...
We stand by every transaction the port has made. The fact is, in that timeframe, for you, you were not a member of the port commission, and so the details of, that were mostly, it's real estate-based, there's a lot of, you know, confidential negotiations go into that. The terms do come out when it goes to open session for approval at the port. However, that is one of the distinctions. If a city council member is not a port commissioner, there's going to be information and parts of that process that don't, that can't get shared, to not compromise the transaction itself. So in terms of the actual project that we're discussing, I think that project is actually a great example of why the importance of the port commission, and as it relates to understanding the priorities of the city, are important. The deal, without getting into all the specifics tonight, was done to facilitate and accelerate development that would be very desirable and beneficial to the city. It's new jobs, it's tax revenue. And again, we stand by the fundamentals of the deal and the structure of that deal. Again, I don't want to get into the details tonight, but you referenced some of the price point, the cost sharing on the infrastructure. It's something that we recommended, we recommended today.
Okay. And with that, we, I think, will have to absorb that responsibility from past port commission, who were non-city council members, except one, who did report as an update.
Well, to be fair, they were former city council members, actually, at this point, with my four months, had more experience than I did, but even more importantly, at the time, were city council members. I mean, if I'm understanding that right. And also, we absorb the responsibility for everyone that came before us, right? That's actually why these decisions are so important, is because the people who come after us are also going to absorb the responsibility for the decisions we make today.
And not that I accept that as my opinion, I think that's your opinion, but I have, I will distinguish myself as not, I probably, you know, would evaluate that a lot closer. But we have that opportunity now as port commissioners, because here today, we have three sitting port commissioners. And in taking a look at, you know, council member, I'll call this point, we do have a recommendation who does have extensive experience, along with his peers, and we do have family members here who are going to be deeply impacted by decisions for the future of the port, where we take a look at a decision tonight, City Manager. And I would like to hear from you, you know, depending on the outcome of tonight, what is your plan to continue to work together with the individuals as they're sitting here present, from you, to take a look at what is going on in the port? I know we have SSA Marine, who is our tenant and works directly, but SSA Marine is not a port commissioner, is not sitting in the room making these decisions. They don't have a seat at the table for some of that. And yet, we as port commissioners, we as port commissioners are key to making those decisions. So can you please help me understand how the individuals here in the room are going to feel comfortable moving forward with their livelihood, with their family, and with any decisions that the port commission makes? How we can engage in working together with them?
Sure. So I think, first, just an important distinction that you referenced there in terms of how the port operates. So we are in a tenant landlord model, the port commission, or the port district being the landlord. SSA Marine, who you referenced, is the primary tenant of the port. I think that also answers the question as to why it would not be appropriate to have an entity like SSA actually on the port commission. They are the tenant of the port. SSA then employs, contracts with the Pacific Maritime Association to employ longshoremen, many of whom are represented tonight. And I think that's, this whole process speaks to kind of answering your question very directly. Look at our current council, look at the current port commissioners. I think it'd be hard for me to cite, in the timeframe that I've been involved in the port, which has been 10-plus years, a time where I would feel like there's been better access, better input to the port commissioners directly, from who are ultimately employees of our primary tenant. So I think that's important to recognize, with or without, you know, a literal seat on the port commission for any of those entities, there is plenty of opportunity and direct access to weigh in and have influence over the direction of the port and the port commission. So I'd answer it that way. I think the interest that you're, that both of you, and I know the others on the council are showing tonight, is a reflection of what that means going forward for the various stakeholders of the port, but particularly the ILWU.
Councilmember, I'll call her.
I was just going to say, Erin, you know, to me, having someone with maritime industry economics knowledge is going to be really critical. We have an opportunity, I would say, a rare opportunity, to have someone who knows exactly how ports operate on there. And as I said, you know, so many families here in Sacramento are employed, I know, I'm looking out there, and I see people, you know, who, whole livelihood and their families, you know, rely on jobs at the port. And I think someone like Tim Campbell, who I am recommending, would be an excellent, not just for the local economy here, but I think on a wider scale internationally, and that's the kind of experience he can bring. I mean, there are people out there. I have, like, 50-some-odd letters here, I have recommendations from our own Senator Dogg, who sits on the Business Professions and Economic Development Committee, agricultural as well, Senator Lena Gonzalez, who's a Senate Majority Whip, and she's chair for the Senate Committee on Transportation, which is a huge committee, you know, Assemblyman Carlos Villa Pudoa, I think I pronounced that right, who's chair of the Jobs Economic Development, as well as Water, Parks and Wildlife. I mean, for these people to write letters of recommendation speaks very, very highly of any individual, because they are going to be working hand-in-hand with that individual. He's bringing so much, you know, and all our board members, we all want to do the right thing by our city, of course we do. We're on a lot of other commissions. Here's a person who's willing to come in with his expertise, his knowledge, his connections, to really expand possibly the, you know, the revenue that comes into the city. And I'd like to see more revenue. I'm constantly getting calls about the potholes, that we don't have enough money to fill, things like that. So for me, this is, it's an opportunity for us, you know, to go beyond. It is local control. Mr. Campbell lives here, he's lived here for years in West Sacramento. We've had, we've had an opportunity like no other right now. And it's just, I find it really difficult to think in such a parochial way. I mean, that's a port with a lot of possibilities out there. There are also a lot of jobs out there right now, there could be more out there. So I think, you know, if we don't appoint someone like Mr. Campbell, I think we're not really acting in the best interest of the city. That's my opinion.
Yeah. If I could respond to that, first of all, I've known Mr. Campbell for many years in dealing with the port. None of this, and I told him this myself, we met and we sat down, and I told... None of this, and I told him this myself, we met and we sat down and I told him what we'd be recommending, has anything to do with Tim's record or the longshoremen themselves. It has everything to do with the, you know, the points I articulated earlier. So I just want to be clear about that. My duty is to the city of West Sacramento, is both the city manager and in this case, the port CEO, and that's going to be the basis of my recommendations to you every time. I do, I do want to say also, while everything you said about Tim and his knowledge of the port is true, we have a fantastic port manager on staff as well, Rick Toft, and it would be a great opportunity for you to engage with Rick and myself, to learn more about the port and how it generates revenue, how that revenue does or does not, in most cases does not directly benefit the city of West Sacramento, there's some nuances there. But that's very important too, as a council member and a potentially a port commissioner, depending on the outcome, to have that opportunity to work directly with our staff. So, would definitely appreciate that opportunity with you going forward.
And if we can open up another opportunity, because I do think, and I'm really, really feel strongly, that not, city council members are the only commission appointees that we can make here. Because we had three commissioners in the last, in the last iteration of commission appointments who were not council members. And yet, they were, you know, they were very experienced as councilmember.
There was one.
Who?
Yes. There was one. It was Mike McGowan. The other two, as I mentioned earlier, were council members when they were appointed.
No, I think, in all fairness, Madam Mayor, I think you're misstating what were the facts, which were that both Bab Sandin and Chris Ledesma and Chris Devercobaldan had all served on the city council at the time of their appointments. If there were one that was not at the time appointed when they were a city council member or an elected official, that would be Mayor, former Mayor Mike McGowan, who was also a longstanding city council member and county supervisor, and served for 20 years on the port commission, and had probably 10 times, if not 50 more times, experience than many of the other port commissioners. So when we're talking about context, you have to recognize the reality of that, and those aren't just opinions and disagreements, those are facts.
Thank you. And I am taking a look at the facts, where three of the members were not council members for the last, for their last two years of that term.
Correct. But at the time, when they were appointed for a four-year term, they were.
I'm not misstating anything. I am pointing out a fact.
We've established that.
Yes, thank you. And, just one moment, one moment. And if, to open up the opportunity of also placing Rick Hart on the port commission, and we can talk about that in further deliberations after we close the public comment, but he is, I would like to also make that recommendation. And, yes, councilmember O'Callaghan?
No, I, no.
Oh, I thought you were grabbing your mic trying to talk.
I think Councilmember Sepiezio Hall has raised her hand several times.
Did you?
You just can't steer. It's just all down there.
Yeah, I'm way over here in the dark. I'm sorry.
So I actually have a lot of comments on this, but I do want to hear from everybody in the room as well, and so I don't think...
You do, you want to go now, two recommendations, and then?
I just, I have, I have something to say. I think that there have been some facts that have been put on the record that are somewhat leading to a manufactured crisis that doesn't, because it's not my first experience with colleagues who have done so. But when we're talking about folks that are, where we're bringing, taking people's livelihoods and whatnot, it's my understanding that it will be before us, or the port commission at some point, to extend SSA's contract. Is that, is that fair to say?
There's a contract extension actively being negotiated right now with, with our primary tenant SSA.
Thank you.
That's correct, yes.
The, it's unfortunate, because it appears that there's a political showcase based on some misinformation and conjecture. It's a little insulting, in my opinion, to assume that any one of the remaining council members could not perform the job in such a fashion that anyone else in the city could. And if we're going to take pride in our being a five female-member city council, and all of the wonderful attributes that we bring to this table, I don't want to sit there and use the words that would suggest that we don't have what it takes to make informed decisions. That can be informed by people who have the knowledge about the job. And you say, Madam Councilmember, the word parochial, that is, means having a limited or narrow outlook or scope, and I just really want to challenge you to not do that.
Okay. And I do want to address this. When you, you're talking about control, I think you're looking at the interest just within a certain locality, and that's the way it was meant to be interpreted. And as for being an alarmist, no, I think this is a real possibility. We see jobs leaving the area all the time. This happens continuously. This is not a maybe-if, it happens. And when we have someone like Tim, I'm not saying that council members here don't have comprehension, we have very intelligent women on this board. What I'm saying is, he's going to bring a lot of extra information, a lot of extra contacts that could be very critical to what happens with our port, to enhance what happens at our port. And I don't, that in no way dismisses the intelligence of anyone here, it's just saying that someone is bringing something that we don't have, which is a lot of experience in maritime economy and industry. So I wanted to clear that up.
Is there, I just, I do want to make sure that I'm clear on, are we at risk of, of getting rid of jobs?
No.
No.
Okay, I just, I want to level set, because I also, I just want to be really, really clear.
This is what I, this is what I'm saying. You have a city council, okay, that receives recommendations, but you need a member of the public who is in tune with what is happening with that port, with the people who work at that port. And I know we have other individuals who give a lot of good, concrete information, you know, to, to the members of the port commission. But I think it really takes someone who has done the daily toil and work, I mean, real-life experiences, to bring us a different perspective. We may be only looking at one perspective of city council members.
But I hope that's not true, Councilmember O'Callaghan. I, transportation, roads, I mean, I can tell you lots about healthcare and mental health.
No, no, no. I'm talking, no, 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 Councilmember, I'm talking about the port, okay? That's what I'm talking about.
I'm just saying, our job is to take in recommendations from our advisory bodies and everything, and make informed decisions.
Right, and they are informed decisions. But if someone can bring much more information than we may even be privy to, that would be such a bonus for everyone here.
I appreciate that.
And as I said, you know, when I looked at the letters that came in from elected officials who are well-connected, who can make things spin and happen, who can bring more money to us here, you know, at our port and in West Sacramento, that told me a lot about what direction we need to move in.
Again, I would appreciate an opportunity to let us dialogue with you as well, to give more background on the port. We haven't had that opportunity yet, so both Rick and I would, I think it would be beneficial.
Do you want to say something? Were you going to wait for...
I have so much to say. My watch just told me, my heart rate just popped over 120. And this, this, this is a really meaningful conversation for me, because of my family's history with the port. We moved here in 87 for my dad to take a job at the port. I grew up jumping on hayrides with him when he would give tours, my dad's John Sepiezio, to give tours to the local schools. Why am I so emotional? It's probably because my dad doesn't live here anymore. When you talk about families deeply impacted by the port, that was my family. In 2006, when local control changed, my dad lost his job. And in 2006, the port took a different structure and went to a different governance model. And our port looks different than other ports. And there is a reason why local governance exists here for our West Sacramento port. I love the port, and I know, and I've told this story to many people in the room, you know, driving over the Palma Desi Bridge, seeing ships at the port get me excited, because I know things are happening. I know, as a city council member, I am wearing a wonderful hat to represent the community and make sure that the decisions that are made at the port and the city are done harmoniously. It's on us, as council members, to learn about this job. I started in December, and I have had multiple meetings with city staff, taken tours of our wastewater treatment facility, and I'm doing it all with a four-month-old, because it's on us to understand how this stuff works and to make the best decisions for our community based on what we know for our community, not what Senator Dodd is telling us to do. And mad respect for the man, but we know West Sacramento better than anybody else. You know, the governance structure exists for a reason. And I'd like to just say, like, the port commission is not our arts commission, it is not the same thing. The port is our largest landowner. And even if we were to use the rationale that it is like the arts commission, wouldn't we go to an application process and ask for people to apply? The two people that have been campaigning for this job are the two, only two names that you've heard of here. There are, if we were to have other people, there are a multiple, a multitude of skills that could be used in this space. An expert transportation planner, somebody who's an expert in land use, you can have a banker, an attorney. And so, I'm a stickler for process, and so the thought that we're going to just, this is the same thing as the art commission, it's not. But if it was, we would go to an application process and actually get folks to apply, which is not what has happened here tonight. Madam Mayor, you mentioned about access and communication. That's our responsibility as port commissioners and city council members, to be accessible. I read every single email that came to me, returned phone calls, had meetings. You have my ear. The leadership of the port and the governance structure that started in 2006, I believe, needs to continue. I want, I want folks to know how much we care about this. I want to hear from you tonight. Let's, this is a conversation that we're having, but I don't think it's fair to, to state this general information that's not accurate about what this process looks like, the folks who were on the commission before. It just, it doesn't seem fair when we're having this conversation.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
The, this statement, for example, saying, well, those two people weren't on city council, well, they were on city council when they were appointed.
They weren't, they weren't council members.
They were when they were appointed and they were completing their term.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter, so if, I am, they weren't council members, and it's, so that leads me to, in my opinion, is that I disagree with the city manager.
Okay.
That they have to be council members, and they were there for two years, and they made a significant decision with a significant amount of money, where I don't know where that money's coming from. That was my point, in bringing up that transaction in a rushed process before their term expired. That was my point.
I think you're convoluting a bunch of different things all at once, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, but you didn't answer the question. Ultimately, here, we...
I'm not here to answer your questions at the moment, that's...
I didn't ask you a question, Madam Mayor, so calm down, please, and allow me to speak. Madam Mayor, this is an unfortunate display of ineffective leadership.
I am going to call a recess at this time.
Okay, that sounds great.
If we, if you talk over me, so please.
I was speaking, Madam Mayor, and if you want to look at the record, you spoke over me. I have the floor.
No, I'm sorry. As mayor, as mayor, I make sure who has a chance to speak will give, will be given the chance to speak.
Would you like me to beg at this point?
As you can, if you would like...
Just take, maybe, we should just take a break?
I agree, I think we should take a recess. Honestly, I think that would be appropriate. If you think, if you would like to call on me, I'd like to speak.
You may speak.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I think that this is an unfortunate display of your power in this situation. We have called all these people out tonight, away from their families, away from their jobs, away from their loved ones, because there has been an agreement between you and two other people to have them appointed to the port commission without anyone else knowing about that. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I want to apologize to you. I know that you are looking at me like I'm your enemy tonight, and I'm not.
Oh, excuse me, no, no comment from the public, please.
I'm really not. I respect your work, I respect Mr. Campbell very much, and I actually reached out to him and told him that myself today. I think that tonight, this has been made very personal, it's Tim Campbell or Rick Hart and no one else. And it's unfortunate that the situation has been set up that way. Mr. Campbell has, I have utmost respect for him and his work and his commitment. I have utmost respect for our working people and longshoremen. I understand that we're having this unfortunate display of a cross-examination of our city manager tonight, and frankly, I think that this discussion needs to occur under different circumstances. I respect that we have processes which would allow us to appoint any number of qualified people, whether that be, maybe that's change, and it was not a city council member, but at this juncture, the history of the city in the last 17 years has been that city council members or someone who has been seated at the, at the dais has been a council member at the time. And so as we navigate this very difficult process, it's imperative for us to do things the right way, and not be impassioned and make this personal, because again, we have, we have a duty here, and that is to be responsive to our constituents, and to, we are directly elected, and you guys can vote us in, you can vote us out, just the same way. I have nothing to gain here, I don't want to be necessarily on this port commission. I just, I want to respect our time here tonight. And I apologize if you feel offended by the way I've challenged Madam Mayor tonight, but it is also my duty as a member of our city council and as a member of the city of West Sacramento to call out the facts as I see them as well. So I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potemorosco. And for the record, and the city manager knows this, I did not make it a plan to have the two members that were recommended. It was a recommendation that we are putting on the table, as I've articulated in the beginning. Now, the city manager has provided his recommendations, but I disagree, which is why I did not accept his recommendations, and I laid out my explanation as to why I disagree. But for some reason, it just seems like I'm misinforming, I am not articulating the history correctly. Those are the arguments that I'm hearing against the reasoning that I'm making. I am trying to be as transparent as possible so that we can have a collegial, collaborative process. However, as I described to the city manager, when I get a confidential memo that I cannot share with the public so they can see and have transparency behind the decision-making process, it makes this process very difficult so that we can be collegial. So, city manager had agreed to speak about this, gave me the opportunity to go back and forth and explain where I'm coming from. And yes, we have been receiving, as you all, I don't know if you've received them, but I did receive a packet of letters, I've been receiving emails, and I've been responding and speaking with everyone. But that's in my nature, aside from being mayor, it is in my nature to be connected with all individuals in the community to the extent possible, because we are doing this part-time, but to the extent possible. That speaks to Councilmember Vern Sepiezio Hall's comment, and that it is upon us, but it is also upon staff to remain connected in some way or another. That's why I asked the question, as to what that would look like, because I've heard that they would like to receive more engagement, and that's why I asked the question with staff about what's going on with the port. Although, we can sit down with staff as well and have those conversations, if that's what you'd like to do. I'm opening that up to each and every one of you to sit down and have those conversations.
I have, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And I just want to say that I, I'm not going to say I'm offended, I'm not going to say I, I am hurt in any way by your comments, Mayor Potem. They are your comments, they are your opinion of the perception of the situation, but they're wrong. And that's, that's the fact, they're wrong. Because I have seen the energy behind the port commission, behind... Because I have seen the energy behind the Port Commission, behind, sorry, the longshoremen here, who are very interested in the decisions that the Port Commission make, and they have been expressing that for many, many years. And what I see today is their activism. I value, appreciate, respect activism among the community members. I have become Mayor to see this happen. This is why I'm real excited and happy to see you all here, to see you come and speak about what you would like to see done in City Council, because you know what? That's how change happens, and that's what I was elected to do, and that's what I'd like to see done, which is what I started in questioning about the port composition back when I started. But if we're going to maintain status quo, we can continue with status quo with the recommendation that the City Manager is providing. So-
I would say that that's not fair. Status quo is what was happening in 2006.
That too, was always, it always evolves. I agree.
And so we, we are in the, we are living in what the future of the port and West Sacramento lives, work, what the future of West Sacramento and the port looks like. And a significant change to the governance structure now will disrupt those, that year, those years of work that has been put into place to not only get us out of our, let's just say the whole, and to continue moving us forward.
I, I, I only caution that comment because I don't think, I don't think there is a definitive set of a plan for the future of the port, and that's why I think that this is a flexible, open dialogue, because as a Port Commissioner, I would not embrace that at all. I am going to say that as a Port Commissioner, I am going to maintain that level of transparency, that level of engagement with the community, regardless of the decision today, communication, because that's what we should be doing and we-
I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you on that.
I'm, I'm just saying that-
Transparency is important.
That-
Yes.
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 The decision-making process, though I disagree, has that level of transparency.
I, so, so Mayor, I, I completely agree with you that it is going to be critically important that this level of activism continues. I think not only for the individuals that work at the port, but the individuals and the homes and residents that live around the port that are significantly impacted by the decisions that are made on, regarding the port. And we, for me, it's going to be important that, that there's this, and we need this, and this level of communication continues, but that we also engage the residents around the port that live there that are impacted. And I'm thinking immediately about our roads, significant-
I totally agree.
-that are impacted by the, the, the work that is happening and going back and forth, that the railway in which you have-
Right.
-things that are being stored behind people's homes.
Right.
And so we are, we're absolutely talking about one portion of this that is hugely important.
Right.
But this is the intersection that we, that we discussed, right? Which is also some of the things that I've heard from both Councilmember Alcala and you regarding when you weren't. I know Councilmember Alcala, you're not currently on the Port Commission, and some of the questions that you're asking, as someone who has been on, even for my short period of time, I have answers for and understand that, oh, that's actually not quite how that works. I think that's why it's important to not only engage, but potentially be on the Port Commission, because some of the things you're, 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 you're saying, if you were behind the scenes with no one, then even Mayor, even you, and saying that, hey, I don't understand why these decisions were made. I was Mayor, these decisions were being made on the Port Commission, and I didn't agree with them. To me, when I hear that, that's even more of a reason why you need a role as a, a sitting Council member on that Port Commission so that you intimately understand why decisions are being made, and you have a seat at the table to be able to say, I'm hearing from not only these residents, but have this larger view and vision of our city, and this is why these decisions are so important, not only because of the port, but how it impacts all of West Sacramento.
But I disagree with that. So-
Okay.
Just want to-
May I just ask for clarification? I'm sorry, Council, Mayor Potemorosco, so you said you don't have any interest on being on the Port Commission, or did I miss here? I just wanted clarification, that's all.
I was speaking to our, our audience today and saying that it's not motivated by self-interest is ultimately what I was, was trying to relay.
With that, would you like to open this up for public comment at this time?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate it. And Madam Clerk, how many requests to speak do we have at this time?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I'm hoping to open it up for three minutes per speaker, but if it gets too long, I, and by the way, just to remind you all, I may hope you provided a request to speak card. Please take note of the time. There is a button to turn off the mic. I don't want to use that button. I don't want to gavel it down. If it gets out of control, we will call for a break if it gets out of control. And just please be respectful and direct all of your comments to all of us, because we would like to make sure that we, we, we understand it. And Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jessica Rocha, Legislative Assistant for, here on behalf of Assemblymember Carlos Villa Pudwa, who represents the 13th Assembly District. Assemblymember Villa Pudwa sends his regards for not being available to be here today due to scheduling conflicts, but sends his regards and would like me to share you, share with you the following words in strong support for Tim Campbell for the appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. Mr. Campbell's maritime industry experience, unwavering commitment to the work he does and port's knowledge will be a great asset to the West Sacramento Port Commission in our region and the industry as a whole. Mr. Campbell has spent his entire career at the Port of West Sacramento. As President of ILWU Local 18 since 2012, Mr. Campbell has shown his leadership and knowledge of port operations by engaging members, providing expertise and extensive support at the Port of West Sacramento. Mr. Campbell is unmatched when it comes to understanding the important ties the port brings to Sacramento and the region, and will be instrumental in building relationships between labor and maritime industry. In addition, Mr. Campbell efforts to advocate in Sacramento for further investments on behalf of the port will further ensure the future of the port as a major economic driver in the region. For these reasons, Assemblymember Villa Pudwa respectfully urges your support for Tim Campbell. Thank you.
Dave, Dave Jones.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dave Jones. I had the privilege of serving as California's Insurance Commissioner and also as an Assembly Member representing the City of Sacramento from 2004 to 2010. In that capacity, I was the co-author of the legislation in 2006, which was enacted virtually without opposition, which established the governance structure for the port. This is Assembly Bill 2939. And I want to speak directly to the question that each of you has raised, which is, is the appointment of a non-member of this council somehow at odds with the intention of that legislation or in conflict with it? And I submit to you, it is not. And I submit that to you for several reasons. One, the express language of the bill and the statute provides that while it is the case that the Commissioners are appointed by your council, and rightly so, the Commissioners may be members of the City Council. They're not required to be members. Now, this bill had the support of the City of West Sacramento, the County of Yolo, the County of Sacramento, the City of Sacramento, and an Assembly Member representing the City of Sacramento. And it was by no means our intention to require that your appointment power be limited just to council members. In fact, to the contrary, in ceding control to you and divesting the governance authority of the County of Sacramento and the City of Sacramento, we wanted to make sure you had the authority to appoint whomever in your view is a person, individual, who can best carry out the duties of the Port District. Now, there was another bill enacted in 2017 that further elaborated on this code provision, which grants to your council the ability to remove a Port Commissioner before the expiration of their term without cause. If it had been the intention of the Legislature or anybody to, again, require or mandate that you only appoint council members, it would have potentially been done in that bill. It was not. Now, the issue of control has come up, and yes, that was one of the intentions of the bill. The intention of the bill back in 2006 was to cede jurisdiction by the county and city of Sacramento and to give it to West Sacramento, and appropriately so, and give you a supermajority of votes on the Port District. But appointing a council member is not necessary to control. If it had been so, then the bill would have mandated that. You can exercise your control in a variety of ways. You can do so by requiring the port to come in to every one of your meetings and report on its activities. You can do so by having two-by-twos between those members of this council that are not necessarily on the Port Commission to meet with those members on the Port Commission. There are a variety of ways in which you can exercise that control, short of actually appointing a member of the council.
I'm sorry, but we've exceeded three minutes.
With that, I will close, only to say that I do think the other intention was to make sure, to maintain the viability of the port. I knew John Sopeseo. I laud and commend him for his public service. There's language in this bill that's directed to trying to maintain the viability of the port, and I think one of the important ways in which you can do that is to draw on an individual that has 25 or 30 years of experience actually working in and alongside the men and the women at the port. So I would strongly encourage you to appoint Mr. Campbell. Thank you, members, for your indulgence.
Thank you for being here tonight. We'll hold your applause, because it'll make, it'll make it that much longer, and then I'll have to cut the, the time to be able to speak to two minutes.
West Sacramento, I got a few documents I'd like to get to them really quick, if I could. Do I just pass them out or do I give you? First one, I wanted to keep it simple. I'm not going to talk about that dumpster fire deal they did in October. We don't have to bring that up. You guys have all my comments and all my written documents on that. What I got on this one is, the first document has no yellow lines. It is what is required by law before that deal is signed. Your staff should have attained this document before that deal was inked by your Port Commission. Didn't happen. The next one is what's going to happen to you next. So this is a third party coming at it for, for violating that ordinance, right? These are third-party lawsuits filed under this, and you can see it right there. Now, the third one is the most important one. So that, when you get to the third one, I mean, now, take a quick peek if you've got any questions. So these are actual documents. You can pull them right from their website. These are cities that didn't do what they were supposed to do. One of them did, and here's what we should have gotten. If we are truly exempt, we would have this document in your hands right now. We don't. As of today, we haven't even filed. Okay? We don't have anything on that, on the register at all. The second one is another city that didn't, that did what we did, and this is what happened to them. They're in a lawsuit. The third one, which is, this is a, this is a transaction where they applied. They were turned down because they were the City Council. And what does the City Council have? They have, they have the ability to change the zone, okay? So what I'm saying to you, if you put a quorum on the Port Commission of City Council members, then the Port Commission becomes, been able to change the zone, and you will be subject 600 acres to the, to this act. This may be your only exemption. I don't know, but I would definitely make sure that by putting a quorum of City Council members on that Port Commission, that you are not subjecting 600 acres to this act. Do not make this mistake. This will go down for generations. We'll have 30 more years of nothing. Is that, have you got any questions? I'm here. I hope it makes sense.
Stephen or Stefan Griffin?
I'll try to make this brief. I've been in front of the City Councils before, so thanks for entertaining me. I am a Port Commissioner, been a Port Commissioner for 13 years now. I'm also a ILW member. In 2008, in 2009, City Manager, we were in trouble. We had a lease that actually saved the port at that time. It was bulk commodities, and through misunderstandings, a lease that Metropolitan Stevedore Company needed deeply to make this contract happen, there's miscommunication. Since I was ILW member and Chief Dispatcher, Secretary of Treasure, Tom Morgan, who was the Vice President of Metropolitan, reached out to me and says, dude, what are you doing? You're destroying our project. So the left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing. To cut the story short, because I only got two minutes, I was able to get two other Commissioners together so we didn't break the, break the Brown Act, and we were able to, to come to an agreement to make sure the land was, was removed from, cleared away for the bulk. Without that contract, and you can look back, City Manager, without that bulk contract, Port of Stockton wouldn't be here today. Another big difference we have, you guys don't have a director. Our director is our employee. You have a city staffer. It's so confusing to us as Port of Stockton. We're 10 times bigger than you. We do way more volume than you guys do because we have a board director that works for us. He is our employee. Okay? So there's motivation there. When you're motivated to make money, when you're motivated to have to produce, you will produce. Nothing against the City Manager, nothing against anybody here at all. I'm just saying, that's the facts of the situation. The Port of Stockton is completely different from the Port of, Port of West Sacramento. And not to brag, but we're a lot more successful. Having someone like Tim Campbell would be critical to the survival of the West, of this port, because as we see it on our side, this port doesn't have much of a future unless you guys make some big changes. Thank you so much.
Please hold the applause. Please hold the applause. Sorry. At this, please hold the applause. I will cut it back. Next time there's an applause, I will cut everybody down to two minutes. So, thank you.
Dr. Early, I really was upset that you were not here at the last City Council meeting. I had this whole speech out, and I was so ready to go. So I'm going to throw a little bit of that in here tonight. I am a local Wesackian. I have lived here my entire life. I am third generation. I have created a fourth generation of my family here, and I am also fourth-generation longshoreman and creating fifth-generation longshoreman. I'm really scared right now. Like I said at the last City Council meeting, I am, I'm completely utterly scared. I have lived in West Sacramento my entire life. My entire goal for life has always been to be a longshoreman. I did go and do a little bit of college because I wasn't sure if the longshoreman thing was going to work out, because it's very, very hard to get, to be a longshoreman, especially here at the Port of City of West Sacramento. You guys had mentioned earlier about, you know, the residents around the port. I have lived everywhere around the port. I lived on Deerwood Street almost my entire life. I just recently bought a new home in the Bridgeway Lakes area, right around, right along the canal, so I got to watch, me and my kids got to watch the first ship come down the canal for the first time the other day, and I'm 41 years old, and I felt like a little child. I was like so excited, like, oh my God, there's the ship! We gotta go! We gotta go watch it! That- I love it. There is nothing else I want to do besides being a mother. Being a longshoreman has been my life goal, and I'm afraid that my life goal may have been the wrong choice, because we have no clue what's going on at the Port Commission. Appointing Tim Campbell, like the other people said, it will bring so much more knowledge to you guys about what we do out there. I honestly don't, I've worked out there for seven years. I've been going out there my entire life, and I have never seen our city manager out there. I have spoken to our city manager in the past on a personal level about the port, and he assured me that the city would never close down the port because we are making so much money. Yes, there was a deficit at one point, but we are making money for the city now, and we want to make so much more. We want to grow, and the only way we can do that is with your guys' help. We need to have people that know what's going on at the Port Commission. We need to have people that know what's going on at the port, how it works, what we can do to make it bigger and thrive. And as a resident, I want to see it grow. As an ILW Local 18 member, I want to see it grow. Thank you.
Melvin McKay.
Thank you for having me. My name is Melvin McKay. I've been the president of Local 10 four or five times, business agent right now. Democracy at best right here is what we're doing, and I believe in your charter that mayor has the opportunity to select who she'd like to be as a Port Commissioner. And I believe that what we're doing here today is we're trying to help this port grow. If Tim Campbell is on that Port Commission like we have in so many other areas, it will be great. It can only grow, okay? You can't have the city who do not even enter into the port to make a decision about what goes on down there. You've got to have working-class people that can give you guidance. If you don't get that guidance, you go nowhere. The only thing I can say to this council is, I'd like to see what's happening tonight. The people that you got here, my brothers and sisters from all over, came here for one reason, to see a change, a change for good, not bad. I have nothing against the city manager, but control is no good for no one. Control is no good. We work in a democratic process, and we work for each other. We work for the better good of people trying to strive, to provide for their families. You cannot go wrong by having a person on that Port Commission who knows the waterways, who knows what Tideland Trust is, who knows who these vessels come in and out, who can actually talk to their brothers and sisters as how the jobs are to be controlled for that day. That's what we do on the waterfront. We work together. We do not bicker about nothing. What we do is, we have a task, we know when our allocations come in, we know how to fill our allocations, and I've been knowing Tim a long time. He is the best man for this job, and it's about time that somebody from labor is on this Port Commission other than a man or woman in a suit. Thank you.
My name is Sean Farley. I'm the president of ILW Local 34. None of you guys could pick me out in a lineup. The second president that works out at Sacramento. It's a problem. One-third of the leg of what gets things done at the port, and you guys don't even know who the leadership is. It's a problem. Needs to change. It's not complicated to have Tim be on the Port Commission. It's not. It's a great decision. He's smart. He's talented. He cares about the port. He's been there for years. He understands it better than anybody. He's not going anywhere. He's not picking up to take another job some other place. He's not going to be a city councilperson that perhaps goes on to the county or to the assembly. He's going to be here. He's going to be here for 20 more years, working at that port, taking care of it the way you would like to see it taken care of by yourselves. That's what he's going to do. Give him that opportunity. Give him the opportunity. Guys just said that you could remove him at your whim. Why wouldn't you give him the shot? Start. It's not working out for you, you can make a different choice, right? Be fair. Be fair. Give labor a seat at the table. Guys have an amazing, I want to congratulate you guys on everything you did today. I was super impressed at the very opening of what you guys do. I mean, it was amazing. Fantastic. Probably one of the best city council meetings I've been to. But make one more choice. Make this really, really simple choice. Give a smart, talented person an opportunity to help his city, help his port, help all of us that work with him, and the families, the families of the truckers who rely on that port. Tim's great at that. Give him that shot, all right? Thank you very much.
Tammy Linker Van Dorian.
Evening, Mayor and city councilwomen. My name is Tammy Linker Van Dorian, and I'm not going to get emotional either. I'm the daughter of retired longshoreman Buddy Linker. My parents moved here in 1967 in their early 20s for my father to start his career at the port as a longshoreman. He retired from the port, recently passed last year, but was well-respected there because he fought for things that were right at the port. I'd like to read a letter from William Adams, the international president. Mayor Guerrero, I'm writing in support of Tim Campbell, ILW Local 18 President for the appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. I believe his experience in the maritime industry, paired with his longstanding commitment and knowledge of the port, makes him an excellent candidate for the West Sacramento Port Commission. Mr. Campbell has spent his entire career at the Port of West Sacramento, starting as a millwright in the ILW Warehouse Division in 1993, before assuming the position of longshoreman in 2011. As a well-liked member of his union and community, Mr. Campbell was elected as president of the ILW Local 18 in 2012, and has served in that capacity ever since. Given his extensive background at the Port of West Sacramento, Mr. Campbell's expertise is unmatched when it comes to understanding the important ties the port brings to Sacramento, such as the working relationships that are fostered between labor and the maritime industry. In addition, Mr. Campbell's continued advocacy for investments in Sacramento will further assist the port's commission goals to be a major economic driver in the region. With his expertise and resources, I believe Mr. Campbell will be an invaluable asset to the Port Commission on projects in Sacramento that benefit the community and the industry as a whole. It is for these reasons that Tim Campbell should serve as the Port Commissioner. Thank you again for considering Tim Campbell's appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission in solidarity with William E. Adams, international president. I just had one other thought or two, but I'm really puzzled why any city council member would be placed on the Port Commission over an employee such as Tim Campbell, someone in his position. It's puzzling to me because you should have someone that's on the inside, someone that knows it, someone who works it, lives it, loves it. And some of you have said that, you know, he can bring that information to you, but that's secondhand. It would be coming straight from him if he was serving on the commission. And one last comment is, there is no South Port without the Port. Thank you.
I'd like to, first and foremost, I hope you would certainly consider Tim Campbell. I've known him for many, many years, and he's an exceptional person. Good countryman, loyal to the bone. Anyway, I'd like to read this letter from the Central Labor Council. My name's Scott Breedenberg. I'm with the American Postal Workers Union. I represent the truck drivers. So this letter here. The Sacramento Central Labor Council, AAFL, CIO, is comprised of over 100 labor unions representing over 180,000 working people in six county greater Sacramento metropolitan area, including thousands of your constituents. After review by our executive board, the delegates of the Labor Council at the January meeting voted unanimously to endorse and support Tim Campbell for an appointed position to the West Sacramento Port Commission. Since 2012, Mr. Campbell has served as the president of the International Longshore and Warehouse Union Local 18, and has spent his entire career working at the Port of West Sacramento. Through his leadership, he has engaged stakeholders to collaboratively work on improving the port's operations. His experience, knowledge, and leadership is an excellent fit for the West Sacramento Port Commission. We have recently learned that the Port of West Sacramento is one of only two ports nationwide that does not have a worker representative on its commission. Worker representation and voice matters when decisions are being made that will affect workers at the port and in industries that flow in and out of the port. Therefore, we respectfully request you support Mr. Campbell's appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission, and urge the West Sacramento City Council to approve his appointment. We appreciate your consideration of our request. Sincerely, Fabrizio Sasso, Executive Director. So with that being said, I hope you would certainly consider Tim. He would never disappoint anybody. Exceptional person, and I think most of you realize that. Thank you.
Johnny Linker. Is Johnny Linker still here? Anybody see him? Okay. But please go to the next person, and they'll try to find him. Jennifer Aguilera.
I'm going to read a letter from Senator Lena Gonzalez, 33rd Senate District, Senate Majority Whip, Chair, Senate Committee on Transportation. Mayor Guerrero, I am writing to express my support for Tim Campbell, ILW Local 18 President for the appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. I believe his experience in the maritime industry and extensive knowledge of ports make him an outstanding candidate for the West Sacramento Port Commission. Mr. Campbell has spent his entire career at the Port of West Sacramento, starting as a millwright in the ILW Warehouse Division in 1993, before assuming the position of longshoreman in 2011. As a respected member of his union and community, Mr. Campbell was elected as president of ILW Local 18 in 2012, and has served in this capacity ever since. Given his extensive background at the Port of West Sacramento, Mr. Campbell's expertise is unmatched when it comes to understanding the important ties the port brings to Sacramento, such as working relationships that are fostered between labor and the maritime industry. In addition, Mr. Campbell's continued advocacy for investments in Sacramento will further assist the Port Commission's goals to be a major economic driver in the region. With his qualifications, I believe Mr. Campbell will be an invaluable asset to the Port Commission on projects in Sacramento that benefit the community and the industry as a whole. It is for these reasons that Tim Campbell should serve as Port Commissioner. Thank you again for considering Tim Campbell's appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. Should you have any questions regarding my support, please do not hesitate to contact my office. Lena A. Gonzalez, State Senator, District 33. I am a casual with Local 18, and I just think it makes sense to have somebody who has the inside information to serve as a Port Commissioner, as opposed to somebody who doesn't work in that industry. He would make the difference, and he would fight for us and be beneficial. Thank you.
Ashley McCarthy.
I am Ashley McCarthy. I have been a member and community member basically my whole life. Even when I didn't live here, we were still a part of the community. I am on the board for the West Sacramento Christmas Basket Foundation, which we have been doing since me and my brother were 10 and 11, serving the community. My father went through the struggle of the port that now we have chosen to make our decisions to be, sorry, our career decisions. I ask you guys to take that into consideration when you guys think about Tim Campbell. This does affect people's families, people who have been here for a long time. Yes, it is your responsibility to make decisions for this city. You guys have a lot of decisions to make for the city, and if there is somebody who understands it, who's been doing it for years, whose family went through the struggle of it, who's seen other people's families go through the struggle of it, if somebody wants to take that on, why not think about at least letting them try that? Giving yourself just a little step back. See what the people you guys represent can actually do. We appreciate everything you guys do for us. That's why people voted for you. We know that you guys are going to make the right decisions, but overloading yourself when somebody who knows a part just a little bit better, it could be taking on too much. Like people have said, the other perspective can change. And yes, things have changed at the port. We're not the same we are, that we were back then. We're now growing. We're now the children, the grandchildren of the people who started the port, and we want to see this continue to grow. With the way the port is going now, we have two commodities, and like you guys heard, Stockton is bigger. That doesn't mean it's better. It just means that they have it ran differently. There is one thing that's different from them than us. That's five meters. If we were to deepen five meters, we could have more products coming in, and Tim knows that. Tim wants us to fill the difference. We have silos. We have warehouses. We have so many resources we can be using, and it's hard to gather all that information while also doing other boards that you guys have. Transportation alone, the port catches a lot, a lot of heat from the, right outside the port. There's potholes. That's not all our business. If that was all our business, I would not have three other jobs trying to pursue this career. I believe if you put Tim in that position, he can help you guys, help grow this port, grow this city, and even have the other people who don't even know about this. How many people have you said the Port of West Sacramento, or I work at the port, and they say, "Oh, in the Bay Area? People don't know we have it. Let's educate them. Let's bring somebody in that could help educate everybody about what we're doing to help with what you're doing." Thank you.
Sylvester Gilmedy Jr.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Sylvester Gilmedy Jr. I'm born and raised in West Sacramento and a current West Sacramento resident, and most importantly, though, I'm a Local 10 longshoreman. And I'd like to read a letter on behalf of Richard Asheris, Port Director of the Port of Stockton from 2000 to 2022. This is to Mayor Guerrero. I'm writing to support the application of Mr. Tim Campbell for the Port of West Sacramento Support Commission. Mr. Campbell's combination of wide-ranging knowledge of the maritime industry and his long experience with the Port of West Sacramento operations will make him an excellent member of the Port Commission. Mr. Campbell has more than 10 years of experience as a president of ILW Local 18, and has worked tirelessly to help promote the port within the maritime industry, helping to bring more cargo and more jobs to the West Sacramento community. Also, if appointed, Mr. Campbell can provide helpful background knowledge and guidance on the wide-ranging labor issues that arise on the docks. At the Port of Stockton, one of the Port Commissioners, Mr. Steve Griffin, has also been in leadership positions representing ILW Local 54. This unique combination has helped the Port of Stockton to expand its business and address labor concerns long before they have become significant issues. You should also know that many ports on the West Coast have ILW members on port commissions providing important insights to port staff and fellow commissioners. providing important insights to port staff and fellow commissioners. I am sure you and your colleagues on the West Sacramento City Council will be very pleased with the contribution of Mr. Campbell as a port commissioner. He is a solid, hardworking person who has always has the interests of the city and port of West Sacramento in mind and will be even more helpful and even be more helpful he as a member of the Port Commission. And this is written by and sincerely Richard DeShiris, Port Director of Port of Stockton from 2000 to 2022. Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Skelton. I'm just going to kind of shoot from the hip here. I'm not much of a public speaker, so bear with me. I'm new out here at the port. I've been out here about a year and a half. I'm the same age as Tim. We're the same age. So I'm learning a whole new game. Been there a year and a half. Every day I show up, I think I know what I'm going to do, I learn something new. Been there for 30-plus years. If you haven't been out there, I thought I kind of understood the job, then something happens, you see something different, you think you know, but you don't know. You don't know what you don't know. Tim's been out there for so long, he knows all of it. I don't see how anybody but Tim would be a good choice for this. So that's my recommendation. I hope you take it into consideration. Thank you.
Jeff Loper?
I've worked with Tim Campbell for over 20 years. His passion and dedication on the safety committee, as a contract negotiator, chief job steward, and president of Local 18 has been second to none. His knowledge of the history, operations, maintenance, and repair of the facilities at the port would be a valuable asset. A voice of labor that not only represents my brothers and sisters here tonight, but generations of workers and the families they have supported here in West Sacramento and throughout Northern California. That's why I'm asking for your consideration for his appointment to the Port Commission. Thank you.
Emily Peterson?
Hi, City Councilwomen and staff. I want to start off by saying thank you so much for serving our city, and it's really great seeing women empowerment in front of me. So my name is Emily Peterson. I work at the port of West Sacramento. I'm third generation on the waterfront, and I'm honored to work alongside my dad, 8922, and my older brother, 23086, and now my younger brother is casually out here. My grandfather, Dwayne Pete Peterson, 20265, came from the Port of Stockton and helped found Local 18. In 1963, my grandparents bought a quaint house off Haverhill Street in West Sacramento where they raised three children, one beating my dad. And then my dad got a house in West Sacramento off Delaware Street where I was raised. And now my older brother is raising his new family in Bridgewater Lakes area, and he just had a new baby. So I want to say congrats, Anthony, on the new baby. My grandfather loved West Sacramento and the port. When he passed in 1997, the Port Commission Board passed a resolution honoring and commending him for his service to the port of West Sacramento and dedicated our longshore hall in his name. That building still stands today. And every day I go to dispatch, I'm reminded of his love and devotion for the port, and I hope to only give a fraction of that back to my community and my local. I see that in Tim Campbell. And so I'd really just hope that you guys could appoint him to a port commission. Many of our members in Local 18 grew up here and bought houses in West Sacramento. Their children go to school here. We support the community in so many ways, by donating to causes and charities, buying meals at the local businesses, and buying gas here. I've been to many city council meetings prior to tonight, and something that I really found stood out about West Sac was the push for diversity. West Sac like strives for. The ILWU is so diverse and progressive, and we're constantly trying to push for a higher standard. Local 18 is almost 50% women. I make the same income as a man. I work the same jobs as men, and I have all the same opportunities as men working in the ILWU. So I just think we would, sorry. So I work the same jobs as men. Most importantly, as a woman on the waterfront in Local 18, I've never felt unsafe. I believe we are the standard, and that's something West Sac should be proud of. So I love my job and I love my union. I love West Sacramento. It's truly amazing to come to work every day and be a part of this living history. So please support Tim Campbell for port commissioner. Please support the port. Please support labor. Please support women. Our workforce is almost 50% women. Thank you.
This is emotional for me. I'm serious about this. This isn't a fad. It's not something I set out to do. But I offer value. And I want to be devalued, just like none of you women want to be devalued either. The debate you have is real. The passion's real. I love it. I was hoping you wouldn't call recess. This is what human beings need to see. 20 hours a day, I've been beating the pavement because there was never an opportunity for a seat before. Senator Bill Dodd, he may not hold weight out here, but he does with me. He does with my union. He does for my workers. Those letters aren't an insult to any one of you women. They're only an accolade to your accomplishments. I showed you respect by going out and getting those letters. I wasn't trying to disrespect anybody. I had value. I keep hearing about how much you know about the port. I'm sorry. I keep hearing about how much I hear about the port, or how much I know about this port. I'm not new to the port. I'm not new to life either. And I understand how things have ran in the past, but you never find out if something's better if you don't give it a shot. Just because it's ran this way doesn't mean it's the most successful way. I'm a professional racer. Everything's an adjustment all the time in order to stay the fastest to break world records. You have to do that. I've known Aaron for a long time. I've known Rick Toff for a long time. I showed him around the port when he got there. That's how much I know about the port. Not taking away Rick's, not taking away from Rick's knowledge. I can only add to it. What a better way to debate something than having a second person there to help make you remember something or spark a scent, make you hunt? That's important to have. That's instrumental. I'm not trying to displace anybody or change how things work. My whole life is in committees. I work in committees all the time up and down the coast. I've worked at every port at this, on the coast. My time's up. I really wish you would consider me. Thank you.
Ed Ferris?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, it's an honor to be here, not to be in front of you, but to be in front of my brothers and sisters advocating for my brother, Tim Campbell. He has put the time in to gain the knowledge that can actually help this community. Because what our union brings is value. Working-class jobs with value and dignity, a rich history of diversity. I'm the International Secretary Treasurer of the ILWU, and I've been working on the, in the ports of Oakland and San Francisco since 1992. I've had the honor of knowing Tim for almost two decades, and I can tell you, I just get more and more impressed with his development and wisdom. So please don't get stuck on, you know, process. It's important, but so is common sense. This isn't a position for a learning curve. And if you're not into self-interest, then step aside and let somebody can actually add value and bring business to this port. That's what you should be focused on. That should be your mandate. So I stand in full support along my brothers and sisters, along the 29 West Coast ports, the brothers and sisters in Canada, Hawaii. We represent hotel workers, ferryboat workers. We're not just longshoremen. Vet techs, early childhood educators, nurses. Okay, we're not just a bunch of thugs. We're considerate people who care about our families, and we're worried about this wonderful location being developed and perhaps a real estate venture or something like you see this dumb shit that is happening in Oakland. Don't make the same mistake that's going on in the Port of Oakland. Have labor, have a voice. Thank you.
Bobby Olvera?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. First, I want to apologize for knocking off one of your colleague's pictures. That's like a moral sin, I'm sorry. So I'll start by saying I'm here in support of Tim Campbell to be on the Harbor Commission, but I want to say why. And my why starts in 1987, when I began working in the Port of Sacramento, doing rice sacks and then driving a log truck. And in fact, Emily's dad was the first guy that gave me a job as a 17-year-old kid, throwing rice sacks in the summer. I'm now the International Vice President for the ILWU. As my colleague said, I represent workers in Oregon, California, Washington, British Columbia, Alaska, and the Hawaiian Islands. And funny enough, I'm also the Vice President for the Port of Long Beach Harbor Commission. I was appointed by Congressman Robert Garcia, who at the time was the mayor of Long Beach. The Port of Long Beach is a little bit bigger than Sacramento. Same issues, right? We've always had a seat, a labor seat, in that commission. And there's issues that we talk about as labor, where we find a path forward. Because when we talk about growth, some people get scared of growth because with growth comes certain other dominos. But that's where we're there too. If you see the Port of Long Beach, 4,600 acres, a $700 million a year budget, we're constantly growing right in the heart of Long Beach. But we're doing it with a social conscience. We're doing it with an environmental conscience. So you can grow and still grow your community. You can grow cargo in the maritime industry and still have a place for kids to play. You can do those things simultaneously. But if you're only seeing things through one lens, it becomes very difficult to get that done. I had a colleague of mine on the commission who has more degrees than, I think they used to say Carter has pills. And he leaned over to me one day in a commission meeting and said, you know, most of us don't know the bow from the stern, don't know what a commodity is, but we know numbers, we know business. Thank God that you're here with us. To weave through some of those details. And that's what Tim brings. In the last month or so, I've been making some phone calls, well, I've been making a lot of phone calls, to try to see where the Port of West Sacramento was at, talking to John Pecori, who is the White House supply chain envoy, talking to the Department of Transportation, talking to the Federal Maritime Commission, talking to the United States Coast Guard, talking to the Army Corps of Engineers. And strangely enough, for the most part, they don't know about the Port of West Sacramento. And that's a shame. And I think that's where Tim brings that dialogue of getting out there and advocating for it. If he can pull in this many people into a room, you guys know that's what union people do, right? We organize. So Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, again, I'm sorry for the picture. I strongly urge you to appoint Tim Campbell, and I'm available at any time for any of you to discuss the inner workings of appointments to commissions, being at the mayor's pleasure. Thank you.
Eric Reyes?
I'm the president of Local 54 out of Stockton, California. I wrote a letter on behalf of Tim Campbell. Mr. Campbell, he's been the president and business agent for Local 18, ILWU, and West Sacramento. Mr. Campbell would be a great fit to sit on the Port of West Sacramento Port Commission. Mr. Campbell has stepped up and taken responsibility of president and business agent since he was registered as a Class B man. It is very rare that a Class B man can be president and business agent. With these qualifications, he will make an excellent port commissioner and would be a great asset to the port and the city of West Sacramento. Thank you, guys.
My name is Peter Bianchini, and I grew up in West Sacramento. My father worked for ILWU Local 17, right there on the port. And he's the one who got me in through one of his friends. And I'm actually reading a letter here from Carlos Pudua. It says, Dear Mayor Guerrero, I am writing to express my strong support for Tim Campbell, ILWU Local President, for the appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. Mr. Campbell's maritime industry experience, unwavering commitment to the work he does, and port's knowledge will be a great asset to the West Sacramento Port Commission and our region. Mr. Campbell has spent an entire career at the Port of West Sacramento as president of ILWU Local 18 since 2012. Mr. Campbell has shown his leadership and knowledge of port operations by engaging members, providing expertise and extensive support at the Port of West Sacramento. Mr. Campbell is unmatched when it comes to understanding the important ties the port brings to Sacramento and the region, and will be instrumental in building relationships between labor and maritime industry. In addition, Mr. Campbell's efforts to advocate in Sacramento for further investments on behalf of the port will further ensure the future of the port as a major economic driver in the region. With the expertise and resources, I believe Mr. Campbell will be an invaluable asset to the Port Commission on projects in Sacramento that benefit the community and the industry as a whole. It is for the reason, it is for these reasons that Tim Campbell should serve as port commissioner on the West Sacramento Port Commission. Thank you for considering Tim Campbell to the West Sacramento Port Commission. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact Israel Land in my office at israel.landa@asm.ca.gov and the phone number 916-319-2013. And I've worked for a lot of places. I worked for Farmers Rice, and I worked seven days a week, 12-hour days. And then to go work at the port across the street, it was like going from, you know, hard work to live, you know, is a heavy, excuse me. It was, it's dangerous work, but it was easier work. And it was like night and day. I love working at the port and always have. And I think he'd be a real good representative for us. I know he will. Thank you very much.
Matthew Jones?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Matthew Jones. I've been in the ILWU for 25 years. I started my career at the Port of Sacramento in around 1995 before transferring to work full-time out of the Port of San Francisco. Tonight, I'd like to read a letter from the Ships Clerk Association, Local 34. This is from the president, Sean Farley. I'm writing to ask you for your support for Mr. Tim Campbell's efforts to be appointed to the port commissioners of West Sacramento. Mr. Campbell is a consistent of yours in District 1, and he would make an excellent colleague of yours on the Port Commission. Mr. Campbell is one of the longest-tenured workers out on the Port of West Sacramento. Mr. Campbell began as a millwright in 1993. 30 years of experience makes Mr. Campbell a knowledgeable, resourceful man who can speak intelligently about where the port has been, where it currently is, and where it can be in the future. Mr. Campbell is the current president of ILWU Local 18 and does a fantastic job bringing the gap between the workforce, the employer, and the customers of the port. In closing, as president of Local 34, I've had the opportunities to work with many port commissioners and staff. Mr. Campbell will be an outstanding commissioner in my experience. Sincerely, Sean Farley, President of Local 34. I've worked with Tim many times over the years, very knowledgeable, the way The way, the way he talks to his workforce. I've, I've worked many, many other places and the type of compassion in that he shows for all of his workers is one of the reasons why I like continuing to come to the Port of Sacramento. Tonight, this is a very emotional thing for me. I've wanted to be a longshoreman since I was seven years old. So right now, you know, I'm, I'm living the dream that I had as, as a young man. And I think everybody should be given opportunities in life. And I think having Tim as the Port Commissioner is very valuable because he's an actual longshoreman. Thank you.
Frank Riley?
Hello, thank you. My name's Frank Riley. And I'm a member of ILW Local 34, Marine Clerks. I'm currently a full-time employee at the Port of Sacramento. I'm the head clerk there. Of course, I want to speak in favor of Tim Campbell, his knowledge and experience. I've been, been working at the port for over three, over three decades. I actually had the, the honor of participating in negotiations under a labor agreement under the previous port. So that kind of shows my, my tenure here. Over those years, I've watched Mr. Campbell. I've watched him how he administers the labor. And I, I think he's a perfect candidate for it. One of the things that people don't understand about our industry with our three different locals, the clerks, the longshoremen and the bosses, is that we touch every piece of cargo that comes in and out of there. And we've seen a lot of cargoes come. And I've seen a lot of cargoes go. I think there's time for change. I think Mr. Campbell is the proper, a proper candidate, proper person for the job. I think he's excelled in the representation of our, of labor. And he'd be perfect for it. But also, when you go into the port and you, you make the corner, I've got a minute and 36 seconds left. You go, you'll see a trailer. And in that trailer is where my office is. And a large portion of the people in this room today have been in our trailer and discussing the activities. And you and your staff are more than welcome to come into the trailer to see exactly what we do. I just wanted to extend that. So thank you very much.
Renee Sharp?
Hello, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to show my support for Tim Campbell. I'm actually from Local 10 in San Francisco, but I moved to West Sacramento in 76. That was my first exposure to the longshore industry, having friends and even gaining a second dad as a longshoreman. So the port to me is, is, makes me emotional also. Anyway, when I was younger, I didn't even dream of becoming a longshoreman because women didn't do that then. And I'm sure at that time, there probably wasn't many women sitting in your seats either. So we have definitely come a long way. And progress isn't, isn't easy. It doesn't come easily. And that is why I think Tim Campbell is the best candidate to serve this, this commission. Because he has obvious the experience and everything you've already heard. But what you might not have heard as much is his integrity and his focus on what he loves, which is his community and the workers that he cares about. He goes in and he'll, he'll fight for your rights and make sure that you're heard and seen and treated fairly. And if he does that at the workforce, I can only imagine what he's going to do for all of the people in West Sacramento. I had a couple notes. I have a second. So in a world where opportunity is slipping through our fingers for so many young people, let's give the next generation of West Sacramentoans a hope for a lifelong career while staying in the city in which they grew. We do this by electing the most qualified person. And that's Tim Campbell. Lifelong career. ILWU Union President has worked internationally with our union, shining a bright light on our port and small city by representing us internationally before and hopefully in the future. Thank you.
Gurnil Singh Bhokani?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here also speaking on behalf of Councilmember Brando Vipudwa, who represents District 5 in the city of Stockton, which includes the Port of Stockton. I am also the Planning Commissioner for the City of Stockton, District 5. And we're proud to house the Port of Stockton in our district. I would like to read the letter at this time. Mayor Guerrero, Councilmember Vipudwa is proud to endorse Tim Campbell, President of the International Longshoreman and Warehouse Union Local 18 for the appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. ILWU Local 18 was formed in 1964 as a subsidiary to ILWU Local 54, which has served at the Port of Stockton since 1937. Many of the founding union members of ILWU Local 18 hailed from ILWU Local 54. The Port of West Sacramento shares the delta with the Port of Stockton, allowing both ports to focus on exports and imports critical to the state's agriculture, construction, and transportation industries. Since Tim Campbell began his presidency in ILWU Local 18, he has successfully fought to keep the union at the port. During his presidency initiated in 2012, Tim Campbell significantly increased the port's annual profits by prioritizing bulk commodities, especially rice exports and concrete imports. I'm sure that will help with the pothole issue. If Tim Campbell is chosen by the City of West Sacramento to serve on their Port Commission, he will be the first Commissioner in the city's history to hail from a union background. This is especially important considering the Port of West Sacramento is only one of two ports nationwide that does not have worker representation on its commission. I appreciate you taking the time to consider both my endorsement and Tim Campbell's appointment to the West Sacramento Port Commission. Sincerely, Councilmember, Stockton City Councilmember Brando Vipudwa, District 5. And I too chair this endorsement of Tim Campbell to the Port of, or Port of West Sacramento Commission. And I am particularly concerned as my fellow Commissioner from the Port of Stockton elevated earlier that the city of, city council members also being to sit on the Port Commission, you know, the city manager being also the Port CEO is very unheard of. It's something that we actually do not allow in our city. You cannot hold a city job and serve on a commission or council. We believe that is not in line with the United States Constitution, particularly with the separation of powers, checks and balances. And I was baffled that that was allowed until it was said that an assembly bill was specially written to do so. So I think that needs to be reconsidered. Thank you.
Harley McCarthy?
My name's Harley McCarthy. I grew up here in the city of West Sacramento. Have the honor of knowing Tim for the last, probably 15, 20 years. I met Tim when I was really young. My dad coming off of a bad streak. Met Tim. Tim offered pretty much straight off his back to help my dad. And I moved away from the city for a while and things weren't going too good. And Tim, you know, told my dad, you know, why not bring the kid back to West Sac? I don't have no way to get him back and forth to school, any of that. Tim took time, come pick me up every morning. I mean, like a second father. I grew up with his son. At times, we didn't make the best decisions, but guess what? He was right there to always show what's right for wrong. And when you got in trouble, you know it's how to get you out. So it sounds like you guys are worried that the port's in a problem. He'll solve the problem, guaranteed. End of the, at the end of the day, a million and one problems in the city. Put him up to one of them, he'll be done tomorrow. My name's Harley and I support Tim Campbell for Port Commissioner.
Is Johnny Linker here? Or has he left? Okay. We have no additional speakers for this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Closing the public comment, bringing it back for discussion among council members if there's further discussion. I would like to make that recommendation again, Mayor. Bring it up then.
I, I did have something to say.
Oh, sure.
Just, no, 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 that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I, I also gave space. Just take it. Oh, my gosh. That was, it was just really moving. And for me to hear from so many generations that, that the port has impacted was not only touching, but, but those kinds of, of lessons and being able to, to continue to have that kind of connection to you all at the start of this, when we said this advocacy is what we need to see and continue to hear from you all. I just, for me, it's really, really important that we figure out how to continue that. I also want to, to flag some of the things that I heard. Because I don't want to, to just kind of skate over it because there's only so many opportunities for, for you all to actually have this transparent conversation happening and being able to see it. And some of the things that I heard were a fear that the port's going to close. Heard that echoed throughout many of the comments. You know, don't take this from us. I, I want to be able to give this to my child. I grew up, my grandfather. And so I think it's just really important to, to, to call that out. I'm not, for me, I'm not sure where that's coming from, but that's, that's not, that hasn't been on the table. I heard a lack of transparency, not knowing what is happening, why are decisions being made? I, I also heard a lot of, Tim's got the solution. And a lot of, of energy around there, there are ideas that you guys are not pursuing. And for me, I'm kind of like, well, well dang, why, where, where you been? Like, why, why aren't we hearing them? Right? And is it simply that, that you don't feel like you have a voice and there's no way to communicate? I, I want to, I want to better understand that and, and figure out how, how can we do more of this? Where it's not us in closed session. I've had one Port Commission meeting that I've, that I've had. And it's not us in closed session and being able to, to actually truly hear from you what are the issues? And how can we improve? Because I, I have not had, had this. And again, I've been in West Sacramento, living next to the port for the entire time I've been here. And, and not hearing these generational stories, I just think is critically important. And so I wanted to, again, not just go straight to, but, but call some of the things out that I heard and address it. Because again, there's only so many opportunities for you to actually hear from us and to hear as a body about some of these issues. And that, so that it's, it's not rumors or conjectures or anything like, like that. Because some of the things, some of the fears that I heard from you all, I, I don't necessarily know if they're grounded in what's been happening in closed session.
Thank you. Yes, council members, please.
That fear that Dante mentioned, we heard it at the last city council member. That's the last city council meeting. And I immediately picked up the phone and called one of your members who felt that way. You know, shared the Port Commission agendas, very high level, what we can, what we're allowed to say that we talk about. But it is to continue port operations. I hear everybody in this room. I don't know any other item where so many people have gotten choked up at the microphone. The port's important. You will always have my ear. Regardless of what comes out of this meeting. And knowing that you have council members who appreciate the work you do every day and work so hard to get to where you're at. And just the sheer amount of passion in this room is incredibly powerful. And this makes me so proud to not only be a council member, but a West Sacramento resident and somebody who loves the port too. So just thank you so much for coming and speaking and having this conversation with us. Because as Councilmember Dr. Early said, this, this, this needs to continue and it will.
Thank you, Mayor. I also heard a lot. Tim's incredibly extensive experience, but also about his character, which is so important when selecting, appointing, I should say, someone to the Port Commission. What I also heard was about opportunity. Opportunity to bring more revenue to West Sacramento. And someone who has the knowledge, who has apparently done some work with the Port of Stockton and helped them increase that revenue. We've had so many people here from the different ports. We've had, you know, letters from legislators. There is incredible confidence in a person who can really help West Sacramento achieve those opportunities. I also heard a lot about relationships. These relationships are really critical for our port. Our city council members, fantastic. We get out there, talk with our constituents, we help them run a lot of commissions. But the extent of the relationships that I heard that Tim has, they go out to Hawaii, they go out to Long Beach, they go out to so many areas that we don't have those connections with, that are vital to creating a dynamic economy here in West Sacramento. But our fears. And things happen. You know, the economy, it's not in the greatest shape. It's getting better, yes. But when you have someone who has that expertise, that incredible knowledge, those incredible relationships and those connections. I mean, we are basically being blessed by having someone of that caliber want to serve on the Port Commission. And it would bring so much more to these incredible women who already serve on the Port Commission, to have someone with that expertise. Someone mentioned something. He made some comment about some nautical term and I had no idea what it was. And I just was wondering, how many other of the members of our council knew? Well, Mesopeseo Hall, probably because her dad was on the Port Commission. But when we have such an opportunity to appoint someone, regardless of what the old precedent was, change, opportunity, that's what we should be concentrating on, what is really best for West Sacramento. And I'm hearing the residents out there, and it's very clear they want someone. They want the best. And that's usually what we try to provide you with, the best when we make these appointments. And you coming forward have convinced me that the recommendation for Tim Campbell to serve on this commission is the correct and only right choice that we have. Thank you.
Mayor Tom Roscoe, did you have any comments or thoughts?
I just want to thank everyone. Those who spoke to us on the, at the podium and those who reserved their comments or those who wrote to us personally and expressed their support for Tim Campbell. Tonight, this room was filled with more passion than it probably has had in all the time that I've stood up here. And I can't be more grateful for that exposure. Tim, you are someone who has invested in the brotherhood, sisterhood, camaraderie, and familial relationships with everyone you touch. And that is undisputed. I'm not here to be convinced about how fantastic you are because I knew that a long time ago. And for each and every person who, who took the podium and talked about their family histories and their deep roots in West Sacramento, there's, there's nothing that... histories and their deep roots in West Sacramento, there's, there's nothing that, uh, there's nothing that could be more powerful than that. My question is, why are you not sitting up here in my seat to make these decisions? These, these are the types of, of discussions, these deep rooted, uh, this, this intelligence and knowledge and commitment that we ask of our leaders. Now, earlier, I challenged the procedure, mainly the procedure, not the person. This isn't, this isn't about Tim Campbell, um, at all. In fact, I, I, I did mention that, um, you know, it, it's not, it's not something that, you know, I have my, I can never imagine that I'd have the knowledge or the intelligence when it comes to port decisions that, that he has. I think that the question posed is, is there, is there a, is this the way, only the way? What I, what I was thinking about and wonder if there's even possibilities of, of having Tim as a, um, leading up an advisory council? Because there, there are so many new things that I haven't heard of until tonight. I'm not on the Port Commission. So, you know, I've been charged tonight with making a, a decision, but at the same time, I'm wondering if the process is, is something that we need to question. And so, um, for all of your passion and compassion and your loyalty and love and all the investment you all made, again, taking the time away from loved ones to stand with different loved ones tonight for something that you matter so much, thank you for that. I think tonight is probably one of the most powerful, uh, council meetings that I've ever sat in in the last seven years, and I thank you for that experience.
Mayor, is that something that would, because that, that was something that, um, that I was wondering as well? And you, you called it an advisory council, but how, how can, how can we make this a regular, um, a, a, a regular meeting in which we are getting to actually hear the Port Commission is, is having these more in-depth conversations? Um, we are able to actually have a, a group of folks who are on the ground, doing the work, letting us know what are some of the things that, that are coming up? And where, again, might the miscommunications be happening? Because I, I feel like I heard that too, right? Like, we don't hear from you.
About, about the port closure?
Yes. Yeah. Well, even just the questions, right? And not just the, not just, um, the port closure. Because again, I don't necessarily know if I heard, "Don't close the port." I might have heard one person say that, but really it was more this message of, "I want this future for my child, and I want this future for myself as well." And I think all of us, um, feel that way, whether we're on the, the, the Port Commission or not. Um, and so I, I, I don't want this to be a one-off, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm just asking, is that, I don't, is that a possibility?
I think, I think I can only speak to my own direct experience, um, interacting with the International Longshoremen and that I, they.
But an advisory council, so something along those.
Maybe a misunderstanding.
No, no, no. Is it, is it, um, whether we call it an advisory group, an advisory commission, advisory council, whatever we call it, what I think.
Oh, I see, to obtain feedback.
Yes. And continued feedback too.
Would you like to ask the city manager that? Or do you want us to direct the city manager to create and, and establish an advisory? Is that the recommendation?
Do you like us to chime in a little bit?
Yes, yes, city manager, can you please chime in? I'm like, question.
City Attorney and I were just sort of sidebarring about, you know, if, if there is an interest in some sort of advisory committee, uh, is it appropriate for it to be to the City Council, to the Port Commission? I think in this case, um, with that link between, you know, uh, you also would serve as Port Commissioners, uh, having it be an advisory body to the council probably would make sense. Then we'd have to talk about and give you options in terms of the makeup of such a committee. Uh, but it, it would be similar, say, to where we have, you know, we talked about commissions earlier, where we have other advisory commissions. So, um, there's certainly a, a precedent and a framework we could come up with for that.
No, I, I agree with that. I, I, I just have to be the, I have to be the attorney to say this isn't really on the agenda.
Right.
But if.
Well, I did ask permission.
Yeah, if the council is.
I don't usually do that.
Well, if the council's interested in having us explore that, you can certainly, you can give direction to the manager to come back at a future, on a future agenda item to talk about what that would look like.
Yeah, I think we would, we would recommend some sort of workshop to get more input, policy input in terms of, you know, who should be represented on that. You know, obviously there's a strong constituency, constituency tonight. Uh, the port obviously has other stakeholders too, tenants and whatnot, but, uh, recreation groups. So it's something we can give some more thought to and, um, talk to y'all individually and come back with some sort of workshop on that, if there's an interest.
Go ahead, Councilmember. Sorry, are you done? Okay.
Okay. Mayor, I, I want to recommend, um, Tim Campbell.
Well, let me, Jim, finish with some comments.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I, I thank you so much for the council members who, um, who have, uh, taken the lead on, you're reflecting your thoughts about the feedback. And, um, and it's not, it's not the first time I've heard, um, from the International Longshoremen, workers have been able to go on site, been able to, um, sit in meetings and also had, um, engaged in a Christmas, you know, celebration. It was very nice and touching, um, just to be able to spend some time with you. And also had my door open in conversations about your, about your interest for the future of the port and the questions, and the questions I couldn't answer, um, and the questions I was, I've been trying to get answers for over the years. Uh, I know that I have been an advocate on your behalf, um, not always publicly, not always calling you on the phone and telling you what I'm doing. Tried to bring a little bit of that out, um, of what I've been trying to do, because I'm not sure if that, um, if that was, uh, relayed properly. But I did want to communicate that I have been, um, trying to make sure that what we do, um, as it relates to the Port Commission, um, is, is inclusive of the feedback I've been hearing, uh, early on, when I've been, um, you know, before on council and then on council and then as mayor. So, uh, I just want to say that I, um, I see all of you and, and I do hear all of your concerns, um, whether they're, they're valid or invalid. I, I, um, you know, as a social worker, I don't invalidate people's, you know, feelings or thoughts or fears. It's, um, it's, it's who I am and I, and, and if we need to do more to, that's my point in connecting with the city manager. If we need to do more in doing outreach and town hall, whatever it may take to be able to explain what we're doing, um, on the Port Commission or as a City Council, I'd be happy to even do it at the port, you know, just, you know, just to engage with you. And feel free to invite any one of us and, and to have a conversation with you. So, you know, just, uh, just, just know that we, we are interested in your concerns and, um, and I am supportive of having, um, a non-council member, as, as you've heard, let me say, um, on, on the Port Commission. So that's been my position all along. For the reasons that I've tried to relay, you know, historically, where we've been in the past Port Commission. Councilmember Alcala, did you want to move?
I, I, I think this is the process to move and we'll have Councilmember Alcala go first.
Yes, I, I did want to make a, a comment though. Um, a member of the public did make a comment about there being a conflict, um, with having all of the, um, City Council members. So I'm sort of directing this, I don't need an immediate answer, um, but, but there is a concern raised of having all City Council members on there and how that would, that's not what's the norm. That's not the process that other ports use.
With, with all due respect, there is no port like this port. And its statute specifically and expressly allows council members to serve. And that was, that language would have been put in specifically to address the incompatible office issue and conflict issues, so there is no conflict.
And just to elaborate on that a little bit, so the, the Riverport Districts is a unique code within, so let me back up. There's the Harbors and Navigation Code in state law, which governs all ports in California. Um, some ports fall under subsections of that code, um, that are, that have common, you know, laws that govern them. There's a section called Riverport Districts, and there's only one Riverport District, and that's our port. But to Jeff's point, uh, from a legal framework, there is no other port like Port of West Sacramento.
All right, thank you. Mayor, I'm going to move the, and my recommendation that Tim Campbell be appointed to the, um, Port Commission. Is there a second? All right, I'll make the second. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
No.
Councilmember Early?
No.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemorosco?
No.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to, um, make the, uh, recommendation to have our city manager explore the possibility of having Tim Campbell or his counterparts, including perhaps Matthew Jones, the young lady who came up to stand before us with the, um, multiple generations of West Sacramento roots and, uh, being 50% of, uh, one of the women who stand with our ILWU, um, Local 18 or, uh, her local, uh, to sit on in an advisory commission. And if we can explore that and bring that before the council, I think that that would be, um, a step forward in, in.
Can I mention, is it, for, is this a recommendation for the advisory? Just to clarify.
Yeah, that what we were just.
So the city attorney mentioned that this is separate and today we're voting on the Port Commission.
My recommendation would be we should conclude the matter of, um, who's going to be on the Port Commission? And I think, but I think that is an appropriate thing to raise in this context, to give, to ask the council to give direction to the manager, but probably best to wrap up the commission appointment.
Okay. We'll finish the Port Commission and then we'll figure out the appropriate time, I guess?
And the, and the recommendation, for me, that's, that's really important. Um, and I understand we, we want to keep it separate. In my mind, it, it's not, because I think it's a, a yes and. Um, I, in hearing several, several things, not only recommended by our city manager, but also even in discussions on this council regarding not, not feeling or not knowing what was happening, not really understanding decisions that were being made because you weren't a part of it, because you weren't on the Port Commission, as well as the, the financial responsibility and the impact it has on our, our larger community. I think it is extremely important that we have our, our City Council on there with that intersection and the, the fiduciary responsibility for me is, is probably the biggest one. And the difference that separates a commission, even like, for instance, the planning commission that has some power in being, being able to make decisions, but mostly is recommendations to us. And it is because when it comes to some of those larger land holdings, it is important that your local folks who have been elected by the entire community, and it's going to impact the entire community, are making those larger decisions. Um, of course, always with the advice of our commissions. And, and so for me, that, that is what stood out. I would make a motion that we have Mayor Potem be on that Port Commission. And, and again, I know we aren't tying it together, but it is also, I think, crucially important that we have the advisory council as well and that we be able to have these connections.
Thank you, Councilmember Early. I did have, um, another recommendation, Rick Hart, that I presented. I'd like to take a vote on that first.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
No.
Councilmember Early?
No.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potemorosco?
Sorry, I was hoping that we could have discussion before calling a vote, so I'm going to make a little comment here. For the same reasons that, uh, are principled with respect to our previous vote, I have to vote no.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right. Now we have another motion, which is, um, Councilmember Early, and I wanted to ask.
I'm sorry. I, I apologize, Madam Mayor. I'm going to have to abstain from that previous vote for a little, for, uh, personal reasons.
Okay, um, so you wanted the clerk to strike your?
No, my comment will stand, but my vote will change to abstain, please.
All right, Madam Clerk, did you catch that?
Noted.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Early? Your motion is to appoint, um, Mayor Potemorosco, and I need a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
No.
Mayor Potemorosco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
No.
All right. We have Mayor Potemorosco appointed to the Port Commission.
Can we move on with the, the next part of that? Which was the, the direction of the advisory?
If we are allowed to speak about this at this time, I know we do, you do ask that, you bring up agenda items for future consideration. Can you, everybody leave quietly, please?
I, I think what, what we're, what we're hearing over here is that there's consensus around the concept of some sort of advisory commission. So I think unless, we don't want to spend too much time, you know, on that specific topic, since it's not agendized, but it's definitely something we, I think we got enough feedback that we can have further conversations and bring back something in a workshop format for the council. And soon, it doesn't have to be.
I think it would be better not to have a vote on it, since it's not an agendized.
That's right, it's not an agenda item. Our, this is a Port Commission appointment. This is not related.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'll, and I'll follow up with you in my, uh, individual briefings to get more feedback and, and we'll, we'll do it as a workshop for us to get feedback from, uh, the, the council and also the community.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
No, I'm sorry, no, 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 no more comment. Now this brings us to item and presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. Madam Clerk?
We did have, uh, one other appointment, um, and I, I don't.
Oh, I was going to take that later.
You want to do it later?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry. Then, yeah, that's further on item 18.
Yes, I was going to take that later.
Thank you.
Thomas Amsler?
Item one, public comment, yes.
Good evening, uh, Madam and Councilmembers. My name is Thomas Amsler. I've been a West Sacramento resident for 21 years and representing the West, uh, West Sacramento Soccer Club. Uh, one thing that's very important for us is we're supporting our youth in our city and would like to bring to our attention the conditions of our fields and play areas that we have. I just also want to give you a couple statistics that, uh, in, uh, the 2022, 21 season, we started off with 848 children. It's probably one of the biggest youth soccer organization here in the area. Then in 21, 22, COVID hit, we only had 148 competitive soccer players that play all year round. And in the 2023, 24 season, which is going on right now, increased close to a thousand players. There are coaches from West Sacramento helping, giving them a playing opportunity. Uh, we have very limited space in terms of the Bryant Park area, which some of the soccer fields are in very bad condition. Uh, we have a lot of children getting hurt out there, coaches, they're getting hurt. I myself blew out my knee five years ago when we played out there. And we just want to bring to your attention the work with Parks and Rec, which we also have attended their meetings to make sure that appropriate funds are directed towards that commission and planning to improve our playing environment. Right now, when we played in spring, we had to wait. We had zero soccer fields available for close to 200 competitive players, where we had to go to other cities and play. We don't have, really have enough space even now in spring, where we're limited to, uh, Summerfield, where most of the competitive teams play. And we share the space out there with Little Leagues. We have 10 teams who play on an 11v11 field and try to train there, and there's just not enough space in giving our youth the opportunity to be competitive with other areas, uh, around here. So safety is a very important factor that we make sure that we invest in our fields and any future part. in any future park development, make sure that we have also soccer fields available for us to play on, and also long-term planning, that we eventually can go towards a sports complex that's comparable to other cities around us. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I recommend that you connect with staff to give you an update about our plans for the park?
Okay.
We have staff here.
Yeah, in fact, we have, it sounds like you've been in touch, but Erin Rivas and Jay Shahal are on our team on parks. If you wanted to step outside, if you haven't had contact info yet, please do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hussein Idalati?
Dear Mayor, council members, attendees, my name's Hussein Idalati. I'm actually a resident of Davis, California, but I'm here tonight because since 2016, I've been coaching with West Sacramento Soccer Club. I coach our U-17 boys team. I've been coaching my nephew, godson, and the boys on the team since they were nine years old. This, you know, soccer community is my community, like my family. Two weeks ago, I and several other members attended the Parks, Recreation, and Generational Services Commission meeting. We're just here today to introduce ourselves and the club with the goal of establishing a positive relationship with the city to support youth soccer and youth sports in West Sacramento. Our main hub for practice and games is Bright Park and Summerfield Park. Our immediate need is for safe, all-year-round, practice and game fields for our teams. Bright Park's conditions are not great. There's a lot of dips and mounds that are ankle breakers. We haven't been able to use the track field for more than two years, which is where our 11v11 games used to be played. I have friends and players who have torn ACLs on that field. Summerfield became our new game field. It has patches of weeds, which are hazards for players, because the weeds are unstable and they can give way when players step on them. I actually had two players suffer severe ankle sprains at our game this past Sunday. Summerfield is unplayable during the wet weather months, because effectively it acts as stormwater retention pond for the neighborhood when it rains. Our club works closely with the City Parks and Rescue Department. We communicate and work closely with Jason Popolo, the Parks Operations superintendent, who is tasked with overseeing maintenance of the field. He's fantastic, knowledgeable, and a very educated individual, who helps us out a lot, but he needs more help. According to analysis done by the city's own Parks and Rescue Department, I think it was actually Erin Rivas who stated it, that without all the new parks that are coming online, the city has 14 full-time employees understaffed in maintaining what we have right now. If I'm incorrect, please correct me. A long-term issue for us is having a soccer complex, and we have Bright Park. It's a regional-level park, but it's nowhere where it needs to be. Our teams travel to San Diego, to Arizona to play. I, myself, have been to many cities, and every city we go to has a nice soccer complex, at least one, if not multiple, and they generate revenue for the city. When people come on those weekends, I think if you look at the city of San Diego and the relationship they have with SURF, I mean, they have huge tournaments that bring in a lot of people and a lot of potential people who go to the businesses, but we don't even have one. And just cities in the region that have them, Dixon, Woodland, Galt, Chico, Davis, Rancho Cordova, these are all cities with at least one or more soccer complexes. And that means a turf field, many grass auxiliary fields that will not hurt you when you play on them. So, I just hope to establish a positive relationship with the city to support youth soccer and all sports in West Sacramento. Thank you.
Cassie Ellis Edwards?
Just want to say goodbye to our former county supervisor and city council member, Mike McGowan and his family. Nope, left.
I believe she's left. Guy Stevenson?
I think he left, too.
Ryan Masau? Ramey Diva Schubert?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. My name is Ramey Diva Schubert, and I have lived in West Sacramento on and off since 1999. I have a stepdaughter who is part of the, who has used the youth soccer program since she was five, and she's now 15. And not only does soccer is good for, you know, to keep fit, but also to gain self-confidence and also team building, which is really important nowadays. And right now, we also have soccer fields, as Hussein has already stated, that are in need of help. And again, like he had already said as well, the future revenue generator that it can have in the future. Why don't we just take our existing soccer fields and let's build them up? We're not asking for a lot, so we would like your support in our endeavors, and also for us to be able to open up a communication that is both effective and, you know, it could be, it could be like a, it works both ways for the community and, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Schubert?
Hi there, how are you? Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you. My name's Jim Schubert. Been a resident with West SAC for 16 years. Ramey was describing our daughter, who has been playing at the soccer club for 10 years. She's also attended Bridgeway Island as a B, and is currently at River City High School as a Raider and played soccer at both of those facilities. Just to make, you've been through a lot tonight, so I'll be more specific of what I think the council could do to help the club. And one would be, the park master plan already includes or identifies a former football field to be improved as an all-season lighted facility. Perhaps the council can budget this fiscal year for a feasibility study or some preliminary design and engineering to move that along. Because without plan specifications or estimates, the club, the city cannot move forward with obtaining grants, fundraising, trying to find sponsorships to go to the next stage, which would be implementation of that. So, that may cost upwards of $50,000, just guessing, and maybe it could come from tobacco tax money allocation for youth health. That would be one ask that could make a big difference quickly. With those plan specifications and estimates in hand, grants and sponsorships are more likely. Secondly, city staff, West SAC Soccer Club, and the Washington Unified School District staff could work together or come together to amend the existing cooperative use agreement that we have with the, for the West SAC Rec Center, to include soccer club access to the River City High School football stadium, field, and the adjacent grass fields when not in use for school activities. Similarly, Westmore Oaks School has the former football field and grassy play areas that are rarely used by the, other than school purposes. And maybe a cooperative agreement could be obtained to use joint use for soccer on non-school days. You know, we're trying to be cooperative and use existing facilities, but expand their use to more youth of the city. Thirdly, we could see a subcommittee formed, probably with the Parks and Recreation Commission, to have a subcommittee to explore opportunities for youth soccer in the city, and it would be good to have a representative of the city council or so on that same committee. And that is three asks that I think I have run out of time on. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak, and appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also suggest you follow up on what we're planning on doing in the city with staff that are here. Thank you.
Ashley McCarthy? Robin Davis?
Hello, I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot, semi-off-grid, tiny home-on-wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. I wanted to briefly address the dismissive disposition regarding RENA numbers at the last council meeting. This is concerning, because RENA is not just a capacity or a conjured-up theory set forth by the state, but a serious need that is recognized to be needed now. The people cannot wait for these projections or estimates to maybe one day come to fruition, so we need to reframe those numbers as real people to change that passive perspective. It's disappointing the conversation was so casually minimized, when the state has allocated $15 billion taxpayer dollars just in the past two years towards homelessness with little to show for it. We know that government does not directly build housing, but government has most definitely directly prevented it. With outdated zoning and complicated code standards, coupled with outrageous impact fees justified by glorified expensive educated guesses we call Nexus Studies, witnessing staff's tone towards the state's suggestions may be part of the source of why this state's housing crisis is here, which are local municipal staff-created barriers that disregard the state's purpose and the spirit of RENA. Not only does staff have a dismissive disposition towards RENA, but they have also repeatedly dismissed any possible solutions for my tiny home. So, I am here to once again request a tiny home-on-wheels ordinance, so that my home may have a chance to come into compliance, and that I may have a chance to live within my modest means. I will continue to show up, to live, and to preach this request, because we no longer have the luxury to be picky about our housing or to discriminate against people who live in homes with wheels. Staff does not need to understand this purpose or share that vision, because I'm not here to change what the city manager thinks about tiny homes, but I am here to change you, council, because you are who represent the people. I was verbally told that staff recommended against a tiny home-on-wheels ordinance, as they view it as camping. I submitted a public records request on March 17th for all communications between staff and the city manager. I so far have not received anything regarding this recommendation or any communication from the city manager to staff about my tiny home situation at all in the past two and a half years. The lack of transparency and bias around this situation is another example of why we don't have enough affordable housing. Homeless advocates, affordable housing advocates, tiny home advocates, community members, and the state who encourages housing options and allocates billions deserve to know why this option is not being considered now. We want to see this justification staff has, this ordinance proposal in writing. Please, council, don't let, do not be swayed by the NIMBY mindsets that are advising from within, and please join our Facebook group for more information.
Andrea Montano?
Good evening, council and staff. My name is Andrea Montano, and I'm a volunteer advocate for the Tiny Home Industry Association, helping municipalities across California employ tiny homes in a variety of ways to ensure they are built safe, placed strategically, and compliant in design and needs of the community. We want to start to express my gratitude to Councilmember Akala for your public support, and to Mayor Guerrero for acknowledging Robin's case and encouraging staff to work with her so she doesn't fall to homelessness, and to Councilmember Solpesio Hall for seeking to understand with your newborn in tow outside of this forum. Thank you. By considering the adoption of what other California cities and counties are already doing, Robin's case could finally move forward, and we can see the city, and as could the city in so many innovative ways. Staff and planning commission's hands are tied until council moves. Until then, we are continuing to make only selective recommendations based on uneducated, harsh, misguided, or misinterpreted information, and the ministerial process is not being followed without the insert of personal biases. I'm happy to provide examples of what is not working. Housing should be a human right, and law says it is, but present data demonstrates the exact opposite. We are 25% into the six-element housing cycle, and less than 1% of very low and low-income requirements have been met to date. There are less than 150 affordable housing units and approved projects that I was able to find, which takes at least three to five years to build. SACB just announced that they are closing two of the shelters amidst the housing crisis, and although West Sacramento did the same in 2019, the city proceeds to acquire more rundown and overpriced real estate, which will be required to pay prevailing wages to make them livable on an average of 300K per door to be staged for federal grants and tax subsidies to fill the widening funding potholes. Please keep in mind, Robin's home costs the city zero tax dollars, and it was built safe, and it could be counted towards RENA, just like the 18 other California jurisdictions, plus the four more that are currently in way. $300,000 versus $0.00. Please let that sink in. The last two and a half years, Robin continues to show up and willing to be attainable housing example for the region. I ask you to please consider showing up for her and everyone here that she is fighting for. Let us not be polarized in the art of checking boxes, and we may succumb to the Tetris effects of our institutionalized failed outcomes. It is our responsibility to provide options, not just capacity for housing. We need to decommission the ancient box-checking strategies for housing element compliance and relearn how to be brave for this mighty little city. We do not have the pop, you do not have to be popular to do a good job, but you do need to understand the audience, so you can properly serve and protect your people with liberty and justice for all. I encourage you, council, to visit third-party data sources via the census reporter and HCD's APR dashboards, and compare those data points to see if we are really meeting the demand of what makes grade or just checking the boxes to make the numbers pencil. As we are asking today a seat for a future agenda item workshop, thank you for your time.
Why?
McKenzie? Felicia Gutierrez? Alfred Melbourne? I have no additional requests to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll close the public comment. Next is our consent agenda, items 3 through 15, and I will pull item 4, 8, 13, 14, and 15, and begin with item 13, which is the National Library Reclamation. I'm asking other council members if you have any items to pull.
You were fast, and I appreciate the fact that you were fast, but I didn't catch them all.
I know, I know, and I know how I feel when you- 4, 8, 13, 14, 15.
I had to do this, but I wanted to procreate here.
10? Anybody else?
I have a request.
10? Well, we'll leave it open for Councilmember Solpesio Hall. Councilmember Akala? Already pulled the ones I was going to pull. All right. Well, I just want to bring up the National Library Reclamation from the city council, and I would like to bring up Alex Hirsch and Dana Christie, the manager from our library. Please come up to the podium, and I'll be reading the proclamation from here. And I just want to say that Yola County Library embraces the city of West Sacramento's mission to provide quality municipal services and facilities and to inspire community improvements that add value to the lives of residents. By fostering partnerships with city departments, Washington Unified School District, Los Rios Community College District, nonprofit organizations and businesses, and Yola County Library embraces the city's goal to improve the lives of all its residents by offering programs for all ages, providing free meeting spaces, local nonprofit organization support, providing weekly English conversation groups, and by making the Arthur F. Turner Community Library a tax preparation site for residents. Whereas for more than 100 years, Yola County Library has provided access for all to ideas that inform, entertain, and inspire, and whereas Yola County Library has done progressive work to support diverse communities in West Sacramento and throughout Yola County, including people of color- including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities providing equitable access to information, services, and resources that open minds and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas the Arthur F Turner Community Library staff offer basic literacy programs, computers, free Wi-Fi, and other resources to help children and adults learn to find, evaluate, and use information to make educated decisions related to their jobs, health, education, and other needs. And whereas the Arthur F Turner Community Library staff offer English and bilingual storytimes as well as summer reading programs to encourage children to begin and continue reading to enhance their personal and professional lives. And whereas in 2022, residents engaged with Yola County Library hundreds of thousands of times by visiting local libraries and its website, participating in free programs and borrowing books, DVDs, audiobooks, eBooks, early learning kits, and items written in several languages. Now therefore be proclaimed at the city of West Sacramento City Council, declares April 23rd to the 29th, 2023 as National Library Week and encourages all residents to visit the Arthur F Turner Community Library to explore what's new and to engage with friendly and knowledgeable library staff proclaimed on this 19th day of April 2023. I just want to thank Mr. Alex Hirsch and Ms. Christie, your involvement with the library, with Sacramento Friends of the Library. Greatly appreciate your involvement in building and strengthening and your dedication in making sure that everything that I've just read, you know, is a reality in our city library. And I just wanted to ask our council members if you wanted to go down for a photo with everybody to give this to you. And then I'll also let you speak.
I just wanted to thank you all for your acknowledgement of National Library Week and also take this chance to thank all of our wonderful staff over in West Sacramento. They're hardworking and dedicated creative folks. And the Friends of the Library who make all of our programming possible, do their fundraising efforts. And I would let that unless you would like.
Do it after. Councilmembers are already up. And I'll just take this short opportunity to echo Dana. I want to speak on behalf of the West Sacramento Friends of the Library. My name is Alex Hirsch. I'm the treasurer and a board member. And truly thank you for this proclamation tonight, every city council member here, to every member of the community. We have heard a lot tonight about a lot of longtime West Sacramento institutions. The Pheasant, the Port, the Yellow County Library, and the West Sacramento Friends of the Library too are a longtime institution. We actually, the Friends just celebrated our 60th anniversary in the city. So predating the city's incorporation even. And we are very lucky in this community to have such a wonderful library, staffed by an incredible librarian and a wonderful library team. You know, we live at a time where libraries, librarians are under attack across the nation, where literacy and education and free thought are under attack across the nation. And so to receive this proclamation tonight by the city recognizing April 23rd to April 29th as National Library Week, it's truly meaningful. As the Friends of the Library, we're a 100% volunteer nonprofit organization dedicated with a singular mission to support our library here in West Sacramento. It is truly a community center. It's available to every community member at no cost, regardless of background, regardless of language, regardless of origin. Everyone is welcome at the library, people of all ages. And we are fortunate to have so much support, to have a diverse selection of materials and programs available to every library member. And the Friends of the Library plays a small part in that, in providing financial support to the library. So I want to thank the city for its longtime support for the library. Again, every single city council member tonight for this proclamation and every single community member for your continued support for the library. And I would be remiss if I also didn't share, as many in the room know, May 4th next month is the big day of giving. The West Sacramento Friends of the Library are one of many nonprofits across the region that participate in the big day of giving. And so if the council members or community members would like to learn more about how to support the Friends, I encourage you to please visit www.wsfol.org. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. All right, and since I pulled item four, we'll go in the.
Oh, sure.
I know, I know. I was going to say two seconds before you leave.
10:40 we got staff.
Alex. I just wanted to say thank you for waiting until 10:40 PM to receive the little paper proclamation that we all are giving you from the bottom of our hearts. There's this quote, it says, "Bad libraries build collections, good libraries build services, and great libraries build communities." And I gotta say, our little Arthur Turner Library, as sweet as it is, gets a lot of traffic. And my little boys, you know, they could get information from a cellphone or from an iPad, but there's nothing like watching them run after Pokemon search games in the library looking for. Because they went for a book and they ended up playing, you know, with activities to win a prize. And that's another way of engaging them. Because back in the days when we had the Dewey Decimal System and we searched for information from encyclopedias. And I mean, now it's very, very different. Instagrammation is changing the way we learn. I just want to thank you. Last week I had a meeting with the head of the Downtown Streets Team and I learned that our members are now meeting at the library in this open space. And that when I say build community, we're talking about people who are fighting back from the going back into homelessness because they're trying to make better lives for themselves and they have a space in our library. And I hope that that, that's, well, I know that it speaks volumes to the rest of us who are watching. Thank you for that and thank you for representing both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protimorresco. You're completely right. The library is a community center for all.
I will be very, very quick. I grew up in the library. There wasn't, my parents didn't have a lot of money and grew up in, you know, Rancho Nova. And so I literally lived in the Rancho Nova libraries. I would just stay there for hours. My mom knew. I could just sit in the corner and that was kind of like my safe place away from things. I believe I've dedicated my professional career to the fact that education is truly the ladder out of poverty. And the work that you all do and our library is very, very special to kiddos who may not be able to build their own libraries at home. And so I just want to make sure I say thank you and that you hear that this really is important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Early.
May I?
No, 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 please. You go.
You know, growing up in West Sacramento, I grew up at the library. I was also homeschooled. And so me and my sisters and my mom spent a lot of time at the library. And one of my favorite stories of the library is we were studying Laura Ingalls Wilder. And I did a Little House on the Prairie diorama. And the library put it on display. And I was so proud. And so the engagement that the library does with the young kids in the community and putting, giving them opportunity to showcase, you know, goofy little dioramas changes lives. I mean, 35 years later, I'm still talking about it. So thank you for all that you do. Big Day of Giving, we'll make sure to promote that. So thank you.
I love that. Thank you, Councilmembers Sopisio Hall.
Alex, I was going to say, I love our library too for a lot of reasons. One is, I would always take my grandchildren there to get their library cards. And that was like their big rite of passage. I'd buy them a little wallet and they'd have their own little library cards and they were so proud. It was a great babysitting tool because I'd sit them down and, you know, they'd be reading their different little books. Also, the community room has been great. You know, a lot of people can use that, you know, and that's a great resource to have right there. I was going to mention also that my son, Carlos, studied for the bar there. It was the only place I'd tell him, "Study here at home." And he'd say, "I can't," you know. So he'd go to the library. That's where he really, you know, and by the way, he passed the first time around. So it's a great place for studying. He also met his wife there, my beautiful daughter-in-law, Arlette. That's where he met her. And so it's a great place for a lot of things. Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Ocala.
Well, thank you so much, Alex, and both of you, Dana, for being here tonight and receiving the proclamation. It really means a lot to all of us, as you have heard, the amount of engagement we've had and continue to have in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all once again.
Next is item four. All right. Oh, thank you. Ariana, I want to ask you a little bit about this contract that we are looking to approve tonight on consent. And how does this contract help address our current pothole situation that we have throughout the city? I'm just hoping it helps solve it in some way because you get, you see the emails, you respond to them.
Absolutely. Good evening. Ariana Dami, Director of Capital Projects. So we have, we are able to answer your questions. We have staff here tonight sitting behind me in case they can provide additional information. But the contract that's before you, the item that's before you tonight is to approve a construction management contract for this project. What we're doing is actually combining several CIPs together. And part of the CIPs are to do, to support the neighborhood preservation program that we have for the city. And the other one is to address focus on arterials. And so in regards to your question specifically on potholes, obviously, we know the target areas, the areas are the worst hit. The arterial program is going to focus on that and address not just the potholes, but the worst ones that require more than just, that will require a dig, further dig out. And so that will be part of the scope with this project.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to clarify that the areas that are within the scope of this contract because I think much of it is actually District Three and District Four, but much of it is District Three. And so what I saw on there was from Lake Washington, if we're going down Jefferson, Lake Washington, down to Marshall. And where, which is great, but really where it gets like really bad, meaning like I can't even safely drive down one lane. I just, I typically drive down the middle and then like will veer when the cars are coming to me is after, so after Davis, down to Southport Parkway, if that makes sense. I mean, it's just completely wrecked. And so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to stop either at Marshall or Davis, but actually would continue down Jefferson to Southport Parkway.
Yeah, and I can address that comment. There was oversight on the description in the agenda report. And it will indeed go past Marshall to Southport on Jefferson. So we are going to include that part as part of the scope.
Aren't you glad to ask the question, Mayor?
That's great, yeah.
Thank you.
I gotta have that in writing, by the way. Share this with everybody.
You know, thank you whoever, apologize for stepping out and using the restroom. Whoever pulled this, thank you. I wanted to do the same.
Did you want to pull anything else?
No, just four. So thank you for doing that. I will just echo what has just been said. Thank you. And I think communication with folks about what the plan is, whether it's a map or something so people know that this is coming. I think people will be very happy to hear this. I know that this payment management, I didn't get the terms right. The payment management systems has been, it's been in process for a long time and now we can actually move forward. So communication with folks, let them know we hear them, we're working on this, and we're going to do something about it.
So the attachment to tonight's agenda report has a map that can help. But also we'll be updating our website with more project information as it becomes available. Thank you. Yes, that map is specific to the Neighborhood Preservation Program.
So it's the colored lines that will be impacted.
So the different colors on the map mean a different set of condition for the road. And so the areas that will be included in this scope.
Remind me of the letters.
I and J.
I and J.
So when I say in that, I think, I should probably articulate better, some type of easily understood social media communication that share. You don't think A through J is clear?
Is it I and J?
That would be helpful.
A through J.
I, I and J.
Only I and J.
I and J.
I'm just saying, I'm just taking, I'm pretending like I'm a resident, just looking at this map online.
It may be a little more work, but is there a way for us to direct people to what, like somewhere on the?
If I could make a suggestion and just have Ariana give a little bit more description about the next steps here.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just to bring it back, this is a construction management contract for a future project that's going to be bid out. And so if you look at it right now, what we're talking about is geographic area where that project may cover. We're focusing on, as you said, the, sort of the areas that need it the most. So maybe if you could kind of articulate how we're going to prioritize and when we'll be back for the actual bid.
Thanks, Erin. So as Erin mentioned, this is to get the contract going with the construction management company. Their, part of their scope is going to include the outreach that you all are discussing, which will include communications, outreach to the areas affected, social media posts, website, direct contact for someone, very similar to how we handle other projects, such as like the Linden Acres project that was in a residential area. There's a lot of outreach put into that. So there are definitely going to be additional outreach coming up. You will also be able to see this project again when we award the contract for construction, which is anticipated in a few months. So this is not the last time you'll hear about this project.
Thank you so much for that background. I appreciate it. Okay, any other questions? We're all good?
We're good.
Okay, I have next item eight. Councilmember Ocala, did you have any questions on item eight? No, I think Erin sort of addressed it and it was primarily, Erin, I told you I was going to ask this because I think people were concerned with the term surplus property. So if you could explain that for us and, you know, have us.
Sure. Tracy Michael, who, great time to remind everyone, is our new Economic Development Housing Director, former Parks Director. Go ahead and have her answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. According to the Surplus Land Act, surplus land is defined as any property owned in fee simple by the city, in our instance, which the city does not need for public purposes. In pursuant to the act, we must take formal action by adopting a resolution, which is the action before you this evening.
So that's why the Pheasant Club is on there.
Yes, there are only a few exemptions to this act. And, you know, if they're really small in size and 5,000 square feet or smaller, and just by way of reference, the Lenny and Kitty Triboli Park that we recently purchased and named, half that size might make you eligible for an exemption. If you already had a development agreement prior to 2019, you may be grandfathered into the earlier versions of the act. But, and unless you can demonstrate that you can build a mixed-use project with 300 or more units, 25% of those being affordable, you really don't qualify for an exemption.
So we're considered surplus. Real quickly, we will continue to be considered commercial. Is that correct, that property there?
Yes. In fact, we've been working very closely with HCD over the last several months to make sure that we understand the process. First exploring exemption options, which didn't unfortunately apply to this property, to clarify the steps in the process. And also, we are able to apply conditions to the property as it moves through the Surplus Land Act process. HCD has reviewed and approved the conditions that we are placing on the property. And that does include maintaining the building in a restaurant use. So we have that commercial component and most importantly, a community-oriented component to the project.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And just as a quick sidebar, there is a bill that we are, we have supported, CALAD sponsoring, that would bring more clarity to those exemptions and address an ambiguity in the law that we think applies. But rather than, you know, put the city in sort of a limbo situation, it was decided that it's best to go through this process for this particular project. That bill, even if it gets adopted and signed, wouldn't take effect till January.
And for those listening, you know, on the live feed, can you give the bill number?
Sure. That bill number is SB 747 by Senator Caballero.
Okay, thank you so much.
I was actually hearing him on Monday.
Oh, you're, okay, thank you.
And I'll be there.
Good. Hopefully, it'll pass. I think that, yes, getting that, getting, getting the clarification, I think our experience here in implementing what the state had approved, the Surplus Land Act here in West Sacramento, has, has really made it difficult for projects like this where building affordable housing on a, on a site like that is just not feasible. And I, just this overall blanket on, we have to go through this process and delaying our ability to continue with what we had envisioned when we decided to purchase the property. You know, this is a, I just want to be able to see, and the commitment that we still have, you know, granted, nobody puts an application in, to maintain what, what we had envisioned when we purchased, you know, Club Peasant, and the planning is to continue to keep it as a community oriented, you know, for, you know, for a commercial use in the future. So, just want to also reiterate, thank you for saying that. No other questions? All right. Next is item 10.
That was me. Yep. It's two quick questions. I just wanted for, just clarity for the public. Hi, welcome.
Sure. Good evening. How we doing? Let me stretch out the podium here a little bit for me. How can I help you?
So, one of the questions that I had just in reading the staff report was, were these potential properties, potentially individual properties or residential? So, I guess it's the residential versus commercial.
Okay. So, the intent of the program is essentially to address the undeveloped properties. So, the kind of theory is if it's developed, in most cases it is, people take care of their property, but we've got, it's about 1,000 or, or so properties on that list that have yet to be developed. And it grows and shrinks as, you know, parcels split or they, they develop. And in theory, every year as we build more, we have less threat, fire threat to the city.
So, it's not, I think I, I might have asked one of the staff, it's not like my neighbor around the street, around the corner, whose weeds maybe have, have, have grown knee high for whatever reason?
No, the intent behind our program isn't for that, but we work pretty close with code enforcement, and we've got other methods that we work with them to help people understand the, the threat that that does provide, but it's more of a nuisance per the municipal code.
Perfect. And the last question I had was regarding the liens and whether, if you go through the process and you put a lien on the property, does that accrue interest, the lien itself?
Not that I'm aware of. From our perspective and our process, we pay the direct cost for that, and we add 20% for the administrative efforts on our end. And that is what we send, that's what gets approved in July for the assessor tax roll. But where it goes from there, I, I do not know. Maybe, I don't know if anybody from finances here would be able to answer that further.
Hi, Roberta. If we do place something on the tax roll, it's typically paid in the next year's property taxes. It does not accrue. We, we don't usually lien properties and not put them on the tax roll, but if we were looking at some large amount, once it's placed on the, the lien is placed on the property, it would not accrue additional charges or interest.
Great. Thank you so much. I, I just wanted to make sure that this didn't end up sort of snowballing into something that, that owner wouldn't be able to, to deal with realistically. So, thank you.
Understood. You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Item 14. Consideration of Amendment Number Three to Legal Services Agreement with Chronic Muscovitz, Teadman, and Girard. And I, I have a recommendation to the recommended action. Oh, hi.
Hi.
Sorry. Which is to add an RFP for, you know, adding to the schedule of rates and services affected to also add that there be an RFP out, to put this out to bid for this, for this particular service. And so, you know, we have, can you explain a little bit how we currently have legal counsel? It's a contracted?
Yeah, yeah. The, the city contracts with Chronic Muscovitz, Teadman, and Girard to provide those services, and has since incorporated.
And has since corp, you know. Had we ever put this out to bid before?
I believe, I believe once. I think it's in the staff report. I don't remember the year, but yeah, it was, it was done once. So, this is, this is the 10th change to the, to the fee schedule, and it's the third amendment to this version of the contract.
We think that was in 2012 it was last bid out.
And so, I, I would like to consider amending the recommended action to request an RFP for this contract and say in about three months to take a look at having this out to bid for, you know, for, go ahead.
Oh, I second that.
So, can we have a discussion?
Oh, yes, we may.
So, if I'm reading this correctly, this is just to increase fees to get them at par with what we should be paying for their services, correct?
Yeah, it's just, it's just to adjust to the market. And actually, it's a little bit below what some of the other comparable firms that we looked at are.
So, I support this as is, increasing the fees so that we're at market rate. The conversation about going to RFP, since the city attorney is our employee, I'd love for us to have a conversation about, I mean, employee review, is that what we would call it?
Yeah, I think that would be in closed session, right?
That we could do in closed session and just have these conversations. And then, if it's decided to go to RFP, we absolutely do that.
Mayor, if I may, but we're not just talking about one individual. This is an entire law firm. That's why the request for the RFP is out there. It's not just Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, but it's the entire. I apologize. I didn't mean to.
It's okay. No, no, no.
The entire firm is our employee. And so, I think I would love to have a conversation in closed session about, like an employee review. Organization review.
Well, we can still do a review, but I, but an RFP out, out there is necessary, I think.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't actually think, at, at this point, I'm not disagreeing or agreeing whether an RFP would be needed or not. I think on this issue, what's actually on the agenda, I think of it as we have a consultant or an organization that works for us, and their, their cost has gone up, right? The, the rate has gone up, which is very different than assessing the quality of the work and whether we're satisfied with the work, which I, I think is where you're potentially going with this, where we would want to discuss that potentially in closed session, and then also decide if for whatever reason we don't feel like our needs are being met, then taking it out to an RFP. But it seems like that would be a, a closed session conversation in the same way we would evaluate any employee that works for us.
Yeah. We, as council members, should understand at least that certain matters such as land use matters, subject to litigation and labor, should be discussed in closed session outside of the presence of the public. And frankly, it's, I think it's improper to invite that discussion before us today when we have a limited purpose in discussing whether or not we are going to make a modest increase to fees. It is not a matter of a contract extension or renewal of the contract or renegotiation of the contract. And frankly, it seems to be a misunderstanding of the item we have before us. So, I would just say that that should appropriately be brought before us in the right context, not here today.
So, once again, misunderstanding the term used to a request that I made, I think a reasonable request for a contract that has not been, like other contracts that we have, considered for an RFP. This is a contract, they're not our employees, and if we wanted to have a discussion in closed session, we should have actually have had it when you're taking a look at raising fees. You're giving a contractor a rate increase, and I think that would also have applied to have a closed session discussion.
Correct.
To evaluate whether they merit the increase. And that's what we do on every contract negotiation when we have it with, in labor contracts, we do have those discussions in closed session before it comes to us and is an agenda item for police, fire, stationary engineers, for all of our staff. So, this is something that's come before us without a closed session discussion. That would speak to Councilmember Sulpicio-Hole as an employee, but they're not. So, they are a contractor, and therefore, I thought, equally reasonable to put down the request, not misinforming or unreasonable to add the RFP. And I would like to make the motion to add the language for an RFP in, in about three months, and then ask for a second, and then?
I second it.
May I ask for clarification?
Yes. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, what's your position on whether or not adding the language to request an RFP is appropriate in this context?
The way to answer that, first of all, just to provide clarity, that the city attorney is in fact an employee of the city council. So, in this case, as John said, while it is a contract with a law firm, the only two positions in the city that are directly employed by the city council are mine and the city attorney. So, so it is appropriate for, when you're looking at an issue such as we should go out for bid with this, with this position, to have that conversation in closed session under the context of employee evaluation. I think for tonight, what we're doing is we're proposing a rate adjustment that has been, something that has been, you know, from our analysis overdue and to bring them up to where the rates should be with the market. And it, it's really outside of the context of whether you're evaluating, kind of, it was said earlier, the, the performance of the employee being KMTG. I think it would be appropriate if there's an interest in among the, the full council to say, let's, let's go ahead and schedule it for a performance evaluation. That's something we could look ahead at the agenda and, and schedule, but our recommendation stands as going forward with the rate adjustment. And, you know, if that's something that, like I said, if there's an interest in bringing back in a closed session context, we can do that.
But Erin, when, when we discuss your salary, I mean, it's, it's a set salary. That's, that's different than, you know, when we're contracting with a law firm.
Well, but it's, it's still the same concept. You're agreeing to compensation and terms.
And when you said market value also, I mean, you know, I mean, I've seen other, other law firms, you know, that represent cities and stuff, and, you know, you know, they've, they've kept their rates definitely under what we have ours. I know you're shaking your head, Mr. Mitchell.
Well, if I could, sorry, if I could, John had done some research on that to do a comparative analysis of, and I don't want to put him on the spot with, you know, all the data, but...
I've got a slide.
Yeah, I was going to say, and you know, I...
If you'd like us to show you, we can show you where the rates compare with.
I'm just going to make one comment real quick. Okay. I, I pulled, I pulled this last time because I feel that the legal representation received was not adequate. When we start, went into single member districts, I know Mr. Mitchell then said, well, it was because of the, the wishes of the city council. And then when I brought up the pack, fact that he was litigating a case, I mean, the CVR cases never get won.
I guess I'm just getting a little concerned we're going back into the evaluation of our employee.
Unappropriate.
We don't want to do that.
Okay, just let me, let me finish.
Of course.
Okay, anyway, that was brought up at the last meeting, but I really don't see how we can talk about an increase at this point. You know, when I'm shopping around for someone that I need to represent me, I'm not saying just an attorney, but anything, I'm very conscious of the money that I spend. And I'm trying to be very conscious of the money that we spend as a city as well. And I, in, in good conscience, I could not, you know, support this increase. That's for me, but I also believe strongly that we should have an RFP out there. It's, it's really important, you know, we put other bids out there for other services that the city has, and this is one that has not changed since, I believe you said, John, since the city was incorporated.
Haven't changed attorneys, no.
The law firm has not changed since, actually, pre-incorporation. KMTG has represented even the East Yellow Service District for the city incorporated in 87. Jeff has been in the position of lead city attorney, I believe, since 2011 or 12.
Yeah, so we're, I'm not discussing anymore. I, I had already said that previously, but even school districts, I mean, when I was in the school district, we definitely, you know, had RFPs for, for different law firms as well. So, we brought in a fantastic attorney like Marie Nakamura. I don't know if they have her anymore, but it's not unheard of to have RFPs, you know. Our school districts done it, other cities do it.
And just to be clear, staff is not opining on whether or not it's, you know, it's a council prerogative to go to an RFP or do an evaluation. What we're saying is that we have a situation with the current rate structure that hasn't been adjusted in, in several years, and we feel that the basis for our recommendation is as appropriate to bring it up to the level that we're proposing. If there's, if there's direction to...
Let me ask you, so, so if we didn't, I guess I'd be the only one on the board, but just hypothetically, if we didn't, does that mean that this, this law firm would just simply disassociate themselves with the city? That's just a hypothetical.
No, the contract would remain as is.
Okay.
I mean, clearly, any consultant can always choose to cut ties. They're not.
Right.
I mean... I'm, I'm not suggesting that you're going to, I'm just saying that you're not indentured servants.
So, if you were to be, so for me, it's a matter of money.
Employees leave when they don't feel they're getting paid well. That happens, it happens.
Yes.
Exactly. So, for me, it's a matter of, you know, being cognizant of taxpayer money.
So, I did, I, I'm going to separate that first and second. I'm going to keep this separate from the consent agenda, and we'll take a separate vote. But, so that's on the table. I don't know, Madam Clerk, did you want to take the roll now on that one?
This is the one for the RFP, Mayor?
Yes. It's item four.
Can we clarify the motion? We're approving this rate increase as is.
The motion is to add an amendment to the recommended action to have an RFP for this contract in about three months.
Can I, we continue the conversation? Or should we just go to, would you prefer to go to a vote? I just, I personally don't feel comfortable going to an RFP until we do a review. And I would, I think I would really love to have that conversation because this is, we, we don't get to conversate like this about concerns that we have about this specific issue, and I'd like to have them before we decide to go to RFP.
I want to say that I think an RFP is not unreasonable.
I don't think anyone's disagreeing, Councilmember Akala, whether an RFP is, is reasonable or not. I think where, what, the only thing you're hearing us say is we want to be able to discuss the, the merits of the, the services we're currently getting and where we might have concerns. And that, that, and that gets into conversation that we can't have here. That's just, it's inappropriate and unprofessional to have them here.
Well, I just think, I just think that we could have an RFP, and later we can discuss those merits of, of the, we may decide, you may all decide to, to continue on, but I think that we should have that out there for transparency purposes.
And you don't, you don't have to vote for it for the reasons you gave.
Yeah, no, no, I know. That's it. I appreciate that.
That's all you can take your action on this. And then, if it's not approved, we will keep this item separate for a separate vote again. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll? I, I moved it, and Councilmember Akala seconded for agenda item 14.
And you're voting on the amended motion or on the?
Yes, the amended motion.
Councilmember Sulpicio-Hole?
No.
Councilmember Early?
No.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protimorosco?
No.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, that motion fails.
Can I make a motion, since we've now separated it, to accept it as is? And then separately, and again, I, I don't know how we would do this if this is more direction, City Manager, to you, that we would need to have a closed session discussion on the contract itself?
Yes, we, we would just want to evaluate the timing of that, so make sure, first of all, confirm we have the full council, and then work with Jeff's firm to give them ample time to prepare an evaluation, just as you would if you were evaluating me. So, so I don't see this taking months, but we just need a little bit of leeway on the schedule for that.
So, do I need to make two separate, a motion and then a separate request for that?
I think you can amend the motion. So, the amendment would be you would like to have a closed session discussion for an evaluation.
Okay. So, I'd like to amend what we, is that, are we in agreement? That, that's, that's legal, and I'm in, within all the checked boxes?
You are, within your rights.
Okay. So, I would like to amend what is, is currently on to accept the rates, and then also to have a review of the contract and services in closed session.
That's what, I, I'd like that too. I'll second.
Councilmember Sulpicio-Hole?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
No.
Mayor Protem Roscoe?
No.
Mayor Guerrero?
No.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the recommended action to accept the rate increases.
I support the rate decreases, so I'll second that.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Before we take a vote on that, may I please make a few comments?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I've had the great privilege of serving this city for nearly seven years, four of which I've served as Mayor Protem, as voted by my colleagues on four different councils with different constitutions. I've served with KMTG for all those years with Jeff Mitchell as our city attorney. As an attorney myself for over 17 years, all of which have been as a courtroom litigator, I'm familiar with the process of working with attorneys in both the criminal and civil contexts. I've sat alongside Jeff Mitchell as well as his colleagues for many years and know their legal counsel to be ethical, well-grounded, and informed with logical advice and an argument regardless of the subject matter before us. They have represented our city since our incorporation in 1987. KMTG with Jeff Mitchell as a representative to our city has represented the city during the development of Rayleigh Field, the Bridge District, the Clarksburg Trail acquisition, the West Sac Recreation Center, numerous affordable housing projects, Stone Lock, and of particular timeliness, the issue that's been in the news over the last week involving Top Rail, the entity whose dealings with our city included the initial refusal to cease and desist of maneuvering and storing railcars with potentially hazardous and toxic materials within our city limits and adjacent in abutting the most vulnerable part of our community, the bright community where lots of unfortunately vulnerable people live and are unable to properly defend themselves. And that, we just learned this morning that they, Top Rail is pulling out these pieces of equipment due to the relentless efforts of cease and desist letters made by KMTG, and that latest film is a huge win for our community that doesn't get a shout out every day. We had a very unfortunate set of circumstances where someone connected to one of our council members was directly involved with suing our city over a matter of districting, and it put KMTG in a very difficult situation that I'm not going to disclose or discuss in this open forum today. But I will say that I have seen nothing but sound advice on the variety of issues that I've had the opportunity to be a part of. Not only that, the firm is of large enough and diverse in its suite of services that it would allow us to utilize that firm for a variety of different issues without having to pay in excess of $500 to $800 per hour to contract out. And yes, we have done that, unfortunately. They are currently being compensated below market, and even the recommendation is, in some ways, still below many other similar-sized jurisdictions. Staff has reviewed the contracts of five firms providing city attorney services to regional jurisdiction and confirmed that KMTG's proposed rates continue to be competitive. With that, these are modest increases, and in some cases may, it appears based on the staff report, save us some money. So putting that aside, what I find to be inappropriate commentary about matters of employment in a public setting, I strongly support the recommended action, and I would vote yes.
Before we take the vote, I just want to note that the individual that requested to speak on this item is no longer here.
Oh, thank you so much.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
No.
Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
And I just want to add a few comments as well before I take a vote on this. I hope you can. I just want to say that, that my request for an RFP, I did bring it up with City Manager as a way of taking a look at exploring the amendment, and there was no question about impropriety or inappropriateness or anything wrong with it. I did, I brought it up and it looked like we thought, bring it up. So I did. I also want to say that I appreciate, you know, the city attorney and all the staff and all the work they've done. My position on this is that I think we always need to take a fresh look, no matter what, for our contract. We need to continue to evaluate them and appreciate the opportunity to do so because we do that with everyone equally. And I think, I think that's an equity, you know, way of, equitable way of, among all the services that we receive, that we take a look at this, and we'll do this in closed session, hopefully. Not that we took a vote on it, but I'm still supportive of the idea.
That's, I was gonna, that's the only thing I was gonna ask too. Do we need to direct the City Manager? Do we have to vote on that? I just want to be clear that that it actually happens.
Well, well.
All right, sounds good.
But I also want to say that I think that they have done some great work in the city and, and I unfortunately will not be supporting this. I think, I firmly believe that we should have had more, you know, even in a closed session about this discussion, which I was hoping for before this came back, but that's not the way it was handled. So with that, I will vote no. And then when it comes to future agenda items, I think we could talk about our future, you know, direction. We'll talk about it then.
Mayor, I do want to make a comment. It was referenced that a friend of mine had sued the city. The city could have easily accepted, as the school district did. The CVRA recommendation to go to single-member districts didn't cost West Sacramento School Board any money. Just wanted to make that really clear.
I will respond. I didn't mention any names, but by admission, you referenced yourself. And I would say that, that we can't discuss the matters specific to KMTG in this open session, but as I maintain the recommendation, all of the advice and recommendations that I have received from our city attorney have been of sound position and ethical.
Judge McAdams disagreed with splitting Abroad and Bright, but that's it.
So moving forward here, when item 15, I have a few questions on this item. City Manager, will you be able to answer the questions?
Was that vote concluded? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
On the last item, there was a question over here. Was the vote concluded? Okay, just making sure.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And with that, I wanted to also find out from whoever can answer the question, what are the different, this is our strategic plan. If you can highlight quickly, we don't have to go into any level of discussion in depth, just highlight quickly, what are the changes? I was hoping to see it on the background, and even if it's just one, two, three, you know, here are the changes.
Sure. Actually, Amanda is going to go over some of the changes of the new items very briefly, but I just want to also say that when we bring this item to put on consent, it's really, we use the term ratification because it's just a reflection of what the council approved during their retreat. There is a background document that has appeared in the past as a companion with this. It's the action agenda that has all the milestones and descriptions. That's very close to being finished, and we do post that online. So as soon as it's done, we'll make sure that we send it out to the council with the newsletter to let you know that it's online, and members of the public can, they'll see it there also if they're familiar with where we store that. So Amanda, if it sounded like you just want to know what the new items, or want to have us describe which ones are the new items, and then which ones are carryover, or you just want the new items?
Just the new items, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the new items for the policy agenda are Measure B Extension, City Facilities and Infrastructure Financing Strategy, Enterprise Crossing Project Development, Strategic Communications Program Development, Sustainable Customer Service Model, Formalizing a One-City Governance Principle, Creating a Community Academy, Community Investment Implementation Impact Fee Reduction in EIFD Areas, Explore Tourism Improvement District and Property Business Improvement District, and Explore Affordable Housing for Police and Educators. And we did also change the title in the policy agenda for the Retail Cannabis from Retail Cannabis Evaluation and Direction to Retail Cannabis Program Development. And then on the management agenda, the new items are Explore Park Ranger Development, Core Services Operations Functions Growth and Funding, Besant Club Development, Cultural Events Fund. But we did move some items that were previously on the policy agenda to the management agenda. So the Climate Action Plan was previously on the policy agenda as well as Equitable Investment Strategy Programs, Ice Street Bridge Replacement, Deck Conversion, and Bright Park Master Plan Implementation. And as far as title changes, the Home Run item was previously titled Home Run Implementation and Growth, and we've changed that to Home Run Enrollment Growth.
Thank you. Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Can you also quickly explain, I know our strategic principles changed slightly with COVID resiliency coming off and core services going on, if you could just.
Yes. So we did, in looking at the items that are currently on the strategic priorities, and given that we've completed the COVID resiliency, that's all been implemented and incorporated into our operations, we expanded the strategic principles to, we added a couple more, and they all are tied to the specific strategic priorities. So you can identify which of the priorities fall under which of the strategic principles. And we tried to add a couple that encompassed more of our core services. So we added the core services and infrastructure. We added the local economic development. And I think that was parks and open space we added as well. And then we changed the descriptions just slightly to broaden a little bit of those categories so that more of our priorities could fall under each of those items.
Thank you. All right. No other questions with that? I think we're wrapped up here with the discussion for the consent agenda items. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
The individuals that submitted requests to speak on the items on the consent agenda are no longer present.
Since opened up the public comment and closed it, I'll bring it back to council. I'll accept the motion to approve the rest of the remaining consent agenda items.
I move second.
Councilmember Akala moved. Councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe? Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you so much. This is approved. Next is our public hearing agenda, item 16, under Community Development. Public hearing and consideration of first reading of Ordinance 23-4 pertaining to an amendment to the term of Yarborough Development Agreement. And we have two people, I think we have Senior Planner Daniel Baruman to provide a presentation on this. Thank you so much. And we have Mr. Principal Planner David Tilly to assist.
Thank you, Ben, a mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and all the members of the city council. I have a slide presentation, but I understand it's a little bit late, so I can be brief. So if we need to reference it, we can always do that, but I'll just go ahead and give a brief presentation. I'm here tonight to present on the proposed Yarborough Development Agreement Amendment. Just a brief background, the Yarborough Master Plan is comprised of approximately 711 acres of undeveloped land in the southwestern part of Southport. Residential village area would include approximately 3,000 residential units, a village core with commercial and mix of land uses, golf course, as well as extensive open space, including a 55-acre interconnected lake park and canal system. The project was originally approved in 2008, which included the environmental, excuse me, Environmental Impact Report, or EIR, General Plan Amendment, GPA, rezoning, design guidelines, and a development agreement, or DA. The DA was set at that time to last for a period of 15 years, so it does expire later this year. The exact date is July 18, 2023. So just, in just about three months. The development agreement establishes certain responsibilities and provisions that the city and the project applicant slash developer must take to fully address the build-out of the planned area. Some of these include developing an affordable housing agreement, providing residential community parks, funding for infrastructure plans such as water, sewer drainage, levy improvements for flood mitigation, land dedication for fire and police services, a school agreement working with the Washington Unified School District on funding for facilities, improvements for a transit system and traffic reduction plans. Also, there's a waiver of vesting fees, which is essentially the developer will pay current fees as opposed to those vested when the project was approved in '08. The purpose of the amendment would be to extend the term of the existing DA between ASB Southport II LLC and the City of West Sacramento for Yarborough for one year, with an additional one-year extension at the discretion of the city manager, making the agreement valid until July 18, 2025. The amendment action requires city council review and approval. If approved by the city council, the extension will provide the developer and staff with time to complete the fiscal analysis for the project, evaluate the certified EIR for current SEQA standards, and complete the tentative maps. On March 16, 2023, the DA amendment was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Ultimately, the recommendation this evening is for the city council to approve Ordinance 23-4 regarding a proposed first amendment to the development agreement with Yarborough, extending the term for one year with a possible extension for an additional year based on the city manager's discretion. This concludes my presentation. David Tilly, Principal Planner, and I are open to any questions. The developer representing ASB Southport II LLC, I think, is also here tonight. Thank you for the time this evening.
So much, Mr. Baruman. Bring it back to council for any questions for the staff? Any comments? I'd open it up for public comment, Madam Clerk. Any requests to speak on this?
We have no request to provide comment on this item.
Thank you. Close the public comment. Bring it back to the council. If there's no comments or questions, I'll accept the motion to approve.
Move the recommended action.
Second. All right. Mayor Protem Roscoe moved, and Councilmember Akala seconded.
Councilmember Sulpicio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Akala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being patient. We will next go to our general administration function, part two. Do we have reports from our council assignments?
I can make mine super fast.
Thank you.
Very, very, very fast. Met with Yolo County Housing Authority. We voted on approving their semi-annual budget. They have several decent chunk of vouchers that they're just, they're trying to get out, and so want to highlight that. We also met the New Hope Community Development Corporation. I am now the new chair of that particular corporation. And then lastly, met the Yolo County Transportation District, and we changed the time to meeting at 6:00 PM. And then there were a couple of other things. I was just pulling up the agenda because I wanted to make sure I got them right, that were approved, including remote board member participation, some bylaw updates as well, and a board resolution on low-carbon transit operations. That's it for me.
I'll be fast here, Mayor. Yol Slana Air Quality Management District Board, I was appointed to the Budget and Audit Committee. They have a new portal called EnviroFlash where you can sign up for that, and basically it gives you the air quality for the day. They had an art competition where they, for Clean Air Day, and they had about 500 entries. Got to vote on that. And then, let's see, what else? They have a new calendar for burn days as well as Save the Air Days, and they gave a presentation on our air index here in Yolo County. And Spare the Air Day, by the way, starts on May 1. That's all. Mayor Protem Roscoe?
Thank you. I just want to say that yesterday, I was at a reception and toured the LISA project, and just want to thank our chief strange here for the work. Very intense LISA project. I mean, very intense visualization and auditory, you know, just expression from individuals that were impacted through abuse in their lives. And glad it's here in the community center in West Sacramento. Just the powerful stories behind the impact it's had on people's lives. So thank you so much for organizing that and encourage anybody, and it'll be here till when?
I think it's gonna go to another.
Timeframe. It was, I think, yesterday was the reception.
Yeah, today. Today it was the walk through.
Today was one day only? Was it?
Today was one day only? Was it two days?
Yes, so thank you for acknowledging that. The Lisa Project was here today in West Sacramento. It will be in Davis at their community center tomorrow and in Woodland at the community center there. I think it's the community center there in Woodland on Friday.
Thank you so much for, I'll try to continue to spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for mentioning that, by the way.
I heard you were there too.
Yeah, no, the point being though, regardless of whether or not, yeah, but thank you for acknowledging that because I know that this was a collaborative effort with our, our law enforcement community. We had people from the Yolo County District Attorney's Office present, multiple agencies and included, you know, the Yolo County Children's Alliance played a very big part as our Child Abuse Prevention Council. And I just want to stress the importance of our need to support these types of programs. It was a fantastic turnout yesterday and I appreciate that you acknowledged it. It's just that there are few people that really understand the, the experience of a child who has been neglected and/or abused, both either physically or sexually or all of it. And so the next time they come around, if, or you'd missed it today and you can go tomorrow in Davis, that'd be fantastic because we as a community need to come together for our children. They're the most vulnerable population in our, in our community and they don't have a voice like we do. So if we can find a way to detect or assist or intervene, this is one of the first steps under which we become, you know, aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Sopizio Hall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No council assignments to report, but for communications. I'd like to thank Public Works Director Bill Roberts for setting up a tour of the wastewater treatment plant.
Great.
I grew up drinking West Sac water through a fire hose and I am a super fan of the water. And if you have not seen the wastewater treatment facility, get out there. It's incredible. The staff has been working so hard, very lot, you know, folks have been out there for their entire careers. And so thank you for that work, for keeping our water safe and clean. And my three, almost three-year-old drinks out of the faucet too, so thank you for that. And then I just wanted to mention, on Sunday, April 30th, I'm hosting a bike ride to kick off May's Bike Month. And so, Madam Mayor, I'd like to invite you and the other council members and the public to join.
Is she gonna be out of town this Sunday?
No, April, sorry, April 30th.
April 30th, okay.
Two weeks, a week and a half from now. That is the kicking off May's Bike Month, but we'll be meeting at Heritage Oaks Park, which is where Tree Top Sac is, about 9:30. And with the support of one of our park commissioners, we put together a bike ride that will take us through West Sacramento and will end us at the Breathe Bike Rodeo. And so.
Thank you.
Blow up your tires, get your helmets out, and I hope to see you on April 30th.
Thank you so much.
I know this time is normally reserved for when we're doing commission reports, but, so I didn't want to add on, but if you're gonna drop on your bike, go ahead and drive by Lanice's Cafe or local high school. West Sac Girls Give Back are doing their annual donation drive drop-off for feminine hygiene and products for other kids in our community. And regardless of how many products we collect that day, the most important part is that we're investing in the leadership of our young ladies in this community and hopefully they too will have an opportunity to sit up before us you know, as a jumping board. So coming out nine to one at Lanice's Cafe.
This sun, when is that?
That would be the 30th.
30th.
Breathe Bike and.
My God, there's so much going on that day. I, I will say that, just adding on. So West Sac PD hosted in City Hall, our, our first ever, you know, sports cards and, you know, and I saw that West Sac PD had their own sports cards. It was so cool. And I just want to thank our, our West Sac PD department for initiating that. It was so well-attended. It was, it was just packed and everybody appreciated. I heard, received stories from members of the community sharing how their children were just talking about it and so excited that they had a chance to do that. So thank you so much for organizing that great event. And also saw a few, a few of you at the Joint League of Cities, CSAC, event for homelessness because I think that was important to have that dialogue with county-state association of, you know, California State Association of Counties to address homelessness in that policy discussion, which I know we, all of our council members share is important. Okay, now we're all done here? We will next go to part two of item 18 is the council appointment of the city's enhanced infrastructure financing district. So I'll continue to say EIFD, Public Finance Authority, PFA Board. And the EIFD was established by the city in 2017 as the first in California. I just want to give kudos to our city manager and, you know, for the genesis of that. It was important to establish that because redevelopment was killed and we lost financing to be able to build areas of our city that needed financing, support for the infrastructure. And it's made a huge impact. So moving forward, EIFDs were authorized by the state following the elimination of redevelopment and as a financing tool, allow cities to use property tax increment financing for infrastructure improvements. The statute is in California code and the PFA Board is required to include three members of city council and two members of the public chosen by city council. And the two public members can, cannot also be council members. I think that's pretty clear here. Currently, all five seats on the PFA Board are vacant. And the PFA Board meets only as needed to authorize the expenditure or transfer of funds allocated to the IFD by the city or to deal with actions related to the issuance of EIFD bonds at this point. And for the foreseeable future, we anticipate that the PFA Board will only need to be, meet about once or twice per year. However, a PFA Board meeting within the next couple of months is needed to transfer funds currently held by the IFD and the city for expenses related to the Ice Street Bridge replacement project. And at this time, staff recommends that the city council appoint three council members to fill the three council, city council vacancies on the PFA Board. And for the two remaining public member seats, staff recommends one of the following options. Point two members of the Planning Commission or other city advisory commission. Those commissioners may also serve as PFA Board members or direct staff to conduct an application process for members of the public to apply to serve on the PFA Board. And staff does not have specific recommendation as to which council members or public members should serve on the PFA Board. So just wanted to bring it back for a discussion among the council members, our recommendations. Mr. City Manager, did you say that I needed to be on it, the mayor?
There's no requirement to, however, I think.
I got you, I got you, Mayor. I nominate the mayor.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's appropriate for the, for the directly of the mayor of the city to be on the EIFD board. There's not many EIFD boards around the state, so, you know, it could be.
How many are there, by the way? You should know. You've been like covering all this.
It's over, over 10 now, but there's a lot, there's a lot more information process, so. So it's very much catching on, but there's still not too many out there.
Well, you're real popular. I hear you.
Do I need to get a second on my motion? I'm sorry. It's just.
So we need to get three council members.
What I'd recommend is have a little bit of a discussion about who's, who's willing to step up to this. And just again, this, the code is very explicit. The, the, there's five members, two appointed by the council. They cannot.
Is there a map that can show where, who is impacted?
I did send an email.
Does affect council member, who is district?
Right, so, so I did that quick analysis of showing the EIFD map. It does actually overlay every district in the city.
Oh, it does?
So there's no real logic to this district.
I'd like to volunteer and then nominate Ernest Sopizio Hall to also be on there.
I'm interested if, you know.
That's okay. If nobody else wants to.
I'm good.
Okay, I mean, I'll, I'll give it, I'll give up my seat.
You don't have to do that. I got you. No, no, you started with, wait, hold on, don't I need to be on this?
No.
Mentioned it, but I didn't see it on the staff report.
Okay.
And then can we talk about the, the, the two other seats or do you want to take those?
Please don't.
Wait.
Why don't we take, why don't we take the vote for, why don't we take the vote for the council members first? So we have, so somebody make the motion for all three and then we'll go from there.
I motion that the mayor, councilmember Sopizio Hall, and councilmember Alcala be on this particular E.
The EIFD PFA Board.
That.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second? So councilmember Early moved. Councilmember Alcala seconded.
Councilmember Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe. Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right, this item, that, the, the three are approved and now we are taking a look at appointing the two members from the Planning Commission or other advisory commission. I don't have the Planning Commission.
Or, or you could direct us to do an application process and, and we could, we could market it to our existing commissioners and the general public as well. In the meantime, we may actually have a need to have a meeting, but we have three members.
But we have, oh, I see. Okay, that's fine.
So we have some time there.
Okay, fine. Well, how would you like to approach that?
I would like to recommend to put, put in a motion that we direct our staff to go through an application process.
Sure.
Marketing both to our current commissioners as well as the public.
I support an application process as well.
Clerk, councilmember Early moved. Councilmember Sopizio Hall seconded. Did you get what the motion was, by the way?
Yes, the motion was do have staff put out advertisement to solicit for applications to fill the two vacancies.
Excellent summary.
Good. We got it now. And please call the roll.
Councilmember Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. Thank you. This item is approved. Council calendar?
No report tonight.
City manager report?
Really quick, just a positive announcement. Habitat for Humanity had their awards yesterday. They awarded the city leadership award for our partnership on Rock the Block and Amanda and I attended that to receive the award, which is supposed to be right here. Left it in my office, so next time you're in my office, I'll, I'll happily show it to you. You could take it home if you want. But, but it's, yeah, it's a nice recognition. Other than that, have fun at Cap to Cap. Thank you for doing that. I wish I could be there with you. I'll go next year though.
We wish you could be there with us too.
I, yeah, it's got a little complicated. Yeah, but next year I plan to attend, so thank you and thank you to staff for sticking around. I do, but I really mean it for next year, I swear.
We need to send also.
You can roll back the tape.
Your, your shadow manager.
Doug Drows will be there and he's, he's the one you really need there anyway, so, yeah.
Can you, are you posting anything on social media about the, the award? So like just, you want to grab a picture?
We will.
Yes.
Yes, thank you for the suggestion. Yes.
Okay. And city attorney report?
Nothing to report.
Let's talk about staff direction for city council members.
That's great.
Oh, staff direction from city council members.
Yes, yes. Well, I mean, I thought, I thought we made a couple.
Yes.
During this meeting.
Just to be clear.
First one was advisory council for court commission slash city council. And please, just going back and helping us to form that, put it on the agenda. I don't, I don't know what that looks like. And then the second one we made was for the evaluation of our contract, right?
So, so on the, if I could, the city attorney and we're talking a little bit earlier about that and my contract also has an evaluation clause. It is supposed to happen every year. I haven't done it in over a year, so, we haven't done it over a year. So I think we're gonna review the city attorney's contract as well. Make some logic to bring that back potentially on the same, around the same time. So let us look at dates and, and process and we'll communicate with you on what we suggest on those evaluations.
I have one. I'd like to explore, it doesn't have to be the next meeting, but I would like to explore on the tiny house ordinance. I think it made a lot of sense when this mentioned that, you know.
I think we had a closed session discussion about.
Yeah, it's coming back to closed session.
Coming back to closed session, yeah.
All right, yeah.
And that, and that would be a topic where if there was a desire, just to, you know, again, this, this is sort of this reiterating process. For items that came up in the course of a, of an, of a council item, like the one about the advisory commission evaluation, definitely comfortable, you know, talking about what those look like and bringing them back. On something like that where it's, we, you know, I'd like to have an ordinance on something, that's where we request that you use the items for future consideration process where, you know, articulated in a, in a, it says in memo to me.
Okay.
Could be an email. And then, and then we agendize it for consideration in a future meeting and then there's actually a vote placed on the future agenda. Something like that, I'd suggest that process, but in that case, we do have a, a plan to bring it back to another closed session. It's not in the context of an ordinance though. It's a different issue, but it's related, so.
Right, with that, future agenda item requests, there are none. I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
So many seconds.
A councilmember Alcala moved and councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Sopizio Hall.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, we are now adjourned.